...order, seven o'clock, this is the February 21st meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Matthew Hicks.
I am here.
Earl Pierce.
Here.
David Fox.
I am here.
Jeffrey Santa Cruz.
Here.
Amanda Savage.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Teresa Rosenberg.
I'm here, I'm here.
Chair Woodfin.
I'm here, so just for the record, we'll recognize Earl Pierce is here as a public citizen now, being appointed to the board as a permanent member, as opposed to a city council, sitting city councillor Brent Todd Ward Four?
One.
One, is here as our council representative going forward, so, and Byron will still be sitting as a, an alternate occasionally, so choose. Okay, so we'll open the meeting, have a quorum, just for the record, if anyone's here for items six A, eight A, and eight B, all of those applications, at the request of the applicant, have been postponed to the March 20th meeting, so if anyone's here for those, those items will not be heard tonight, everything else on the agenda will be heard. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the January 17th meeting, we'll have Counselor Todd and Earl Pierce voting on this, but if anybody else would like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so the minutes are approved, we'll open the next section in our agenda, which is design review applications by consent, if anyone's here for design review applications by consent in our agenda, they are items five A through five N, all signed applications, I believe, right? If anyone has any questions or concerns about any of those applications, if you could make yourself known, we'll pull them out. Any member of the board have any of these items wish to be pulled from the consent agenda? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve those items on our agenda with architectural design review comments as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that moves us onto the next section in our agenda, which is determination of completeness by consent, that's six A, was that pulled?
Yes, march.
Okay, so, motion to second postpone the determination of completeness, okay, so would someone like to make a motion to postpone the determination of completeness on item six A to the March 20th meeting? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that has been postponed, and brings us to our public hearing section, so we'll open up with item seven A, Madam Clerk, if we can read that into the record.
Sure, Neopco Signs, I'm sure I'm saying that wrong.
Neopco.
Neopco Signs, on behalf of Bookend Lending, request architectural design review approval for a new four-square-foot, non-illuminated, double-sided sign at 19 Washington Street in the Civic Performance District.
Okay, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
I am Glenn Shadwick, Neopco Signs.
Okay, and Glenn, I believe, both of the reasons for these applications being pulled from consent for the same issue.
Correct.
Okay, so if you can tell us what, I had a discussion with Glenn the other night, just anecdotally about a couple of things, and this was brought up, and I said, bring them off of consent, we'll talk about them.
Yes.
We'll open the public hearing, thank you. Always smack me and tell me to open the public hearing, so, we'll open the public hearing, but if you can kind of give us an overview for the record.
Sure.
Tell us what the issues are, and we'll go from there.
So, I asked to have the, both these permits pulled from the consent agenda, because both permits were denied, so to speak, because they didn't want a phone number or a web address on a sign, talking about the design review board that is appointed by you people and controlled by you people. It's been happening quite often over the past year or two, and this is kind of a trend that happens with the design review board, they get something that they don't like, and then, this went from a suggestion to now a stipulation to get the sign passed, that the sign not have, both of these signs not have a web address on the sign. First of all, First Amendment rights protect all contents and color of signs, so the board is not able to tell people what they can and can't have on their signs. Second of all, it's important for both of these customers to have their web addresses on their signs, I explained in detail to the design review board that, in the case of New Car, this particular company has 25 locations throughout the states, the New England states, and they are able to bring cars in from all of these different locations, and bring them to Concord, so their website is very important, because people can go on, pick a car, and have it delivered to Concord, and be sold on premise. So, again, I'm very troubled that the design review board has taken this stance, telling people that they can't have phone numbers and web addresses on their sign, so I'm here to ask that the signs, that both of these signs be passed, with the content that the customer wants on the signs.
Copy, right in the middle of asking a question, so I'll hold that question for one second.
Okay.
So, again, design review acts on behalf of the planning board to address things like this, and other design, design things that they're more suited to be able to look at. When I spoke with Glenn, I kind of went back and looked through some of the regs and some of the things, I think it's probably something we need to look at a little closer to figure out, is it a First Amendment issue, is it a freedom of speech issue, is it a changing of the times where a website address is becoming the primary resource driver for people to recognize a business opportunity, so, I think it's probably something that, if we did something here tonight, I think, in conjunction with that, I think maybe we need to look at it a little bit bigger, and figure out what we want for the regulation piece of it, or what we want design review looking at, understanding that, you know, the sign is made to be the name of the business, the requirements from a zoning perspective are location and size, not content, we dictate what's on the content, we dictate what, opaque and transparent backgrounds and colors and things like that, so, what I don't want to do is micromanage it, I don't want to tell Starbucks that they need to change the color, because we don't like the way this looks on a sign, but by the same token, I want to be able to give the applicants a little bit more direction in saying, this is what we want to see. I don't know if there's any thoughts or concerns, Jeff?
I can tell you, I don't know about your First Amendment rights, per se, but I can tell you the state of New Hampshire, on signs in there, right away, do not allow phone numbers as websites, and this carries through from business directional signs, the adopted highway signs that are on the interstates, things like that, and that is a specific regulation they have.
Okay.
So if you were to say, you know, regulate this, similar to the state does sign, you wouldn't be deviating from something that's already occurring in other categories.
This sort of, this sounds like it's above our pay grade.
Yeah.
So, would it be appropriate to table this item and refer it to legal for an opinion?
I don't know. Any thoughts from staff? How does that affect you? Is the New Car sign up?
So, the New Car sign has a temporary sign permit for a sign that is now elapsed, so they have to take that down, so now they won't have any identification on the building. In that particular case, the three building signs were all approved by the design review board, however, the major's setback or denial was for the pylon sign panels and the new signs below it. Currently, they have a changeable copy sign, so they could put anything they want up there, they could put up five phone numbers, they could put up five web addresses, and I told the board, you know, work with me here, you know, we're trying to make something nice and neat and have a stagnant message on the sign, and, you know, they put what they want up there now, you can't limit what they can put on there, so, you know, let's, let's be reasonable, and at least allow this sign to have a web address on there.
I'd love to see that changeable sign go away, is that?
It's an eyesore, for sure.
So that's going to go away?
Oh yeah, it's, both of those signs, it's a double-sided sign, both of them would come down, there'd be a instantly illuminated sign with a permanent message in there, and the only time it would change is if they came back for a change in permit.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to, I don't, I think Earl's recommendation of further study isn't important, but I don't want to hold up the sign, and particularly for a car dealer, and, you know, taking over that space, and giving us a little bit of help getting rid of that changeable sign in exchange for the sign there, so, I'm inclined to approve it, but that's me, so, Amanda?
So, the pylon sign, the one in which is?
Pylon's out by the street.
Yes, exactly, the one that's out by the street, that's really the one that's in question, not the ones that are on the building, which does give identification for the owner. In regards to being able to put a website, I think it's just been traditional in regards to the city of Concord not permitting signs to have websites on them, and it's been universal, so I, that's a good question, that's where it was going, was, what is, what is the reasoning behind that, I'm just, so I can have a little bit more information regarding that, is there anyone?
I don't know.
Maybe Beth, you can.
So if you look at our zoning regulations, it outlines the purposes of the sign regulations, none of them about content, encourage effective use of signs as means of communication, maintain enhanced the appearance and aesthetic environment of the city, retain the city's ability to attract and encourage economic development, improve pedestrian and traffic safety, minimize potential adverse effects of signs on nearby property, and enable fair and consistent enforcement of these sign regulations, so those are the purposes of the sign regulations.
And again, this is, if you look at the packet, it's, the New Car sign is up on the top, and then this is the sign down below it, so, we've got examples all over the city where it's, you know, the ice cream store is up here, and then it's thousands of flavors, or whatever it says down under there, so, I'd be more concerned if it was actually part of the, the one sign, if there was just one sign, and it was focusing on the website address, again, to the point of why, and it needs more study, again, if you look at the packet, I think it's a marked improvement over what's there, good, but better and different, I don't know if it's, if it's right or wrong. David?
Just a question, technically, if, as my compatriot here acknowledged, the state has a, has that a statute regarding that information on a sign, and if we approve this, we're essentially going against a state regulation?
Yeah, I don't know.
So, where does that put us?
Just keep in mind, I'm talking within the right of way, the state's restrictions, not on private property necessarily, but the point is, is, they do it because it becomes a distraction to drivers, because they suddenly try and write something down, or whatever, and it's not a quick, oh, that's New Car, I know it, boom, type of situation, less about, you know, the aesthetics.
And that's the only, our, our code does not have any prohibition, it doesn't prohibit phone numbers or web addresses, the only thing it references, if there's wording that interferes with the view of, or may be confused with, any traffic control sign, signal, or device, that is prohibited, that's the closest we would have to a wording that would be prohibited.
So there's nothing in there that says that, so, to somebody's point, where do we pick it up, and how do we start enforcing it?
Right, I was, again, I was just curious, there, if there was a very specific regulation or ordinance that said, cannot have the website identification on there, so. There is not.
So I have a question, do all the New Car facilities have a sign like this?
Most of the New Car facilities have their web address on their signs, yes, and to kind of get back to a couple of the comments that the board said, first of all, you're talking about a state statute, this is, this is not a state statute that, that we have to fall under, so, and, and the point that, I understand that, you know, if you have something on there, people might want to write it down, and they would look off for where they're driving or whatnot, traffic-wise, I can see where that would be a problem, but, an easy website like newcar.com is not something that people are going to have to write down, they're going to recognize it right away, and, you know, you want to promote business, that's part of the sign structure here in Concord, and, it's funny, when I get calls for signs, I'm a very good liaison for telling them what they can and can't have, and the first thing I tell them is, you've got to get a permit before we can even move forward. A lot of people don't like to come to the city to get permits because of all the hassles that it is to get it, so they would rather put up a sign.
What hassles?
Well, this, this is one, one in particular, I mean, you know, my two clients, when I said to them, they don't like the web address on the sign, they're like, why? And, you know, in this day and age, the web, the website, and, you know, the world wide web is the most popular place to look for advertisement, if somebody's walking down on Washington Street, going by Bookend Lending, with all the businesses that are up there in the school, they see a website, they may go on, and they may get a, have this person do some lending for them, so, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, according to the First Amendment rights, there are certain stipulations that you can deny a sign in its content, and that is, if it has obscenity, defamation, fraud, incitement, fighting words, and speech that contains criminal content, a website and a phone number does not fall into any of those categories.
So, you get to a point where, you know, you've got the Bookend Lending's one, it's all on, it's all on one sign, so it's Bookend Lending's, and then the website address right under it.
Right.
I don't love that as much as I like the New Car one, but, again, you know, you could, you could ma, even made it smaller and put a phone number on there as well, and just overwhelmed the sign.
Right.
That's why you get paid, the money you get paid is to make it look like a decent sign.
And when I design signs, you know, if somebody wants to put too much on it, I tell them, you've got too much on there, in this case, if we just put their, their name on the sign, there's going to be an awful lot of white space around the area that you could fill with, with the web address, so why not put it in there, why not have this company get some business from somebody going on their web address, their website, their web address.
Okay, yes.
Thanks, I just had a question, that, this has never, I assume, to the best of anyone's knowledge, or ADR's knowledge, come up before an issue, I'm, it's kind of surprising that no.
It's come up in the past, for sure, for approvals, where we've either made the exception and approved it, or denied it, altogether, in some cases, ADR hems through that most of the time, and gets, and gets to a point where they'll say, okay, yeah, we're going to approve it as it's submitted, so, we've got plenty of signs with web addresses and phone numbers on them that have been through the process.
Okay.
And to Glenn's point, it just doesn't make sense where they'll start to get something in their craw, and all of a sudden, and everyone is denied, or everyone is pushed back on, so.
And could I follow up a question, if I could, then, do we know for, what the reasoning is behind ADR's decision to, why we're pulled back? We don't know it specifically, because that would be helpful if we.
I didn't see any in the minutes.
I didn't either.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see anything, I read through the minutes, I didn't see anything.
One thing I'd like to.
You've had, you've had experience in this before, I mean, as Mike.
Yeah, you're accurate, thank you, typically what happens, we had a couple of members for years who would argue this vehemently, and typically, there was just an agreement that was struck between the applicant and the board, but we haven't really had an applicant really push this hard on it, and I think if we had before, we probably would have relented.
And I think it needs to be addressed, and again, at the staff level, and legal input on what they can and can't say, and, again, size requirements, location, I get all that, but, we're treading on thin ice on what we can say, and what we can put on there, yes.
One thing to add is, I get permits throughout New England, and I go before boards like this all the time, there hasn't been any other city that I've gone before that has limited web address or phone number on a sign, has never come up, and it's, it's, this is the first board, and that's why I'm very surprised that it hasn't been addressed before this.
Okay, with that, yeah, go ahead, you have a question?
I was just going to say that, this, staff has discussed this, and, and there have been, there was one, just as a point of interest, there was one pretty big case took place out in Arizona, Reed v. Gilbert, several years ago, and, that inspired, because I come from the West, that inspired most of the Western jurisdictions to redo all their sign ordinances, to remove all, anything to do with content, yeah, and it's, it's on our list being discussed.
Okay, so, we may reach out a little bit more for feedback on that new piece, but I want to move along, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Nope, so we'll close the public hearing, thank you Glenn for your testimony. Comments, questions from the board, any other thought process on approval, denial, I think, and I'll make the, make the statement that I think that we could approve both of these signs and not be out of line, we're not setting any precedent, again, there's plenty of signs in the city that have got this, and I think we can address it more thoroughly, once we've got some information from staff in the next month or two. David?
I just want to make a comment, his comment, and that is, I don't think this board is a board that, you know, endorses hassles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I took minor offense to that comment, you know, I think that regulations and hassles, there's a reason for both.
Yeah.
And I just, I'm minor offended, you know, that he felt that coming before this board is a hassle.
I'm sure he was talking about the zoning board, or some other board in the city, could not have been planning board.
We're generally pretty good.
I second that.
What's that?
I second that, and I'll second your motion.
Okay, second my motion, okay, any, any thoughts, discussions, comments, Earl? So I got a motion, I got a motion on the table to support, supporting both seven A, seven B as submitted, recognizing that architectural design review did not have any other issues other than the website, colors were good, other things that were in there were, were fine, so, my motion is to approve them as submitted, with the drawings that are in your packet, with the website addresses, and I've got a second, yes.
Close the public hearing.
We did close the public hearing already.
Okay, I missed it.
You good with that?
I probably will vote against it.
That's fine.
I think this is, I think this is larger, we need to.
Big issue, yeah, it's a big issue.
Clear it up, and, and, I would love.
And I would love to see the sign go up. I-
Yeah, I want to support the business, but I want to do it the right way.
Without the website, if it's something that can be done later, until we get this. I mean, shame on us if we've been wrongfully saying you can't put up a website or a phone number on private property.
Doesn't seem to be any support, doesn't seem to be any support of that in the regs that I saw. Okay, so I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we've got three nays. One, two, four nays?
Two, three, four.
Okay, so four nays, three yays.
That was yay.
You were yay.
Four yays, four and four.
Yeah, we have an even number two.
That's awesome.
Great.
I'm happy to go home. I'll go either.
You're going to go home. Which way did you vote? Okay, as a method to get this pushed through for the main sign, do we have a problem with the main sign at New Car?
I thought it was already approved. It approved me for the pylon. Was it only the building signs? I thought this lower panel was-
The top sign is already in, Glenn?
The top sign was in, it was approved. This is the bottom.
So it's not like they're without sign.
Specifically, there's the four square foot, non-illuminated, double-sided sign.
Okay. So we're going to push them both back with a no vote and figure out where we're going to go.
This is 7A. This is the one at bookend lending.
Al?
We started with, you started with 7A.
Yeah.
Yes.
We kind of talked about both together.
Oh, you did.
7A is what we were actually-
No, I was making a motion on 7A and 7B.
So-
So maybe separate them.
Separate them?
Yeah, separate.
Did that help? Okay. So 7A, we got, I've made a motion to approve it as submitted. Is your second still valid? Motion's been made in second on 7A. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Nays?
Nay.
Two nays? Earl?
Earl?
Ah, nay, I'm sorry.
So three nays, four yays. Did I catch that right? Okay.
I voted yay for this.
For the book lending?
Book lending.
You voted yay for that.
On both the bookends.
On just the bookends. So that's, hands, hands on yay?
Hands on yay.
Hands on yay. One, two, three, four, five. So five. So that one passes. So that's good. So bookends is good on 7A. 7B, same motion is on the table, same second is valid. Any discussion? All those in favor? By hands? Aye. So again, we'll fail on that one. So we'll need to come back on that one with either changed sign or further discussion with staff and some clarification. Just for argument's sake and for direction to the applicant, further discussion from staff, some direction from staff. Does that clear things up in your minds on the nays? So if staff can come back and say regarding the New Car sign, there's no, no this, no this, no this, legal weighed in and said that we can't do this, then we're comfortable with it.
Mr. Chairman, you should make a motion, since it failed as a tie, you should make some other motion either to table it, postpone it.
Right, so we don't run into that issue.
Yeah.
But Alex was saying-
Okay, yeah.
I was going to clarify, so on the item 7B, there are four sign applications for approval. I'd recommend, and I have them spelled out if you want, recommend the three building signs.
Yep.
As submitted, and then postpone, or continue the public hearing, whatever you'd want for the particular signed permit that has to do with the website.
Okay, sorry.
Well, and technically, the public hearing was only open for 7A and closed for 7A. So, and 7B was advertised as a public hearing, so we really need to open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and have the motion for 7B.
I'm glad you said that.
I tried to be good by putting them both together.
Are you glad you sat down there this time?
Sorry.
Okay. So we heard testimony on 7, does any member of the audience have any questions or concerns regarding 7B? So I'm going to open the public hearing. Glenn, your testimony was regarding both, so you're solid with what you said? Oh, I shouldn't have said that. I shouldn't have said that.
As long as you stipulate that the three building signs, which it designed by the board was okay with, is okay to go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
And then-
We'll figure out what's going on.
Figure out what's going on with the other one.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. We've got, we had a motion and a second.
Well, we should redo those motions.
We had a motion and a second. I'm going to make the motion. You still approval on the second?
As long as I'm clear, you're making the motion to approve the three.
Approve the three, deny the pylon.
No table?
Table the pylon.
Are we tabling? Then I will second that motion.
Okay. So motion to approve the three building signs, table the pylon sign.
And I, if I could add to that, to get staff and legal input.
To get staff and legal input.
That's why we're tabling it.
So.
So I'm amending his, I'd like to request to amend his motion.
No, it's, well, okay.
The second, sorry, to, or your-
Are we still on the discussion phase?
Yes.
Okay. May I?
Yes.
If legal comes back and says, we can't tell them no, then the concerns here are moved.
In theory.
So could the motion include that?
So they don't come back?
You're basically saying, if legal comes back and clears it, it's an auto back yay, they're approved. If legal comes back and needs further finding, then it stays. Matt?
Do you have to take it off the table?
Yeah, but, yeah, I'd rather have it come back. I don't, I don't want it to be, to put it all into staff, because you're right, you're tabling it, so it's going to come off the table at the board.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. So the board is asking the legal department to provide a legal opinion on whether this particular aspect of the sign is regulated, should be regulated. So I think it'd be appropriate to table the pylon sign, get a legal opinion from the legal department, bring it back next month. The board can digest that legal opinion, and then make a decision on how it wants to act on the pylon.
Perhaps make a policy decision.
Agreed. And make a policy, maybe a bigger decision on the sign piece. So again, motion and a second. In this case, it's to approve the three signs on the buildings, table the existing signs. So we should be in agreement that that's the case. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we're good? We close the public hearing?
We close the public hearing. We did it.
My goodness. All right.
That was easy.
Glenn, you're clear, good. Thank you very much for your testimony, and we will move on to Section 8 in our agenda. We already got to Section 8, so can't be that bad, 7:30. All right, let's read item 8A into the record. Whoops, nope, sorry, 8A's been postponed, 8B's been postponed. Let's read-
Do we have to vote? Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, we can get motions and votes to postpone those.
So 8A, do them together or do them separately?
You can do them together.
Okay, let's do them together. Let's save a minute. We will take a motion to postpone item 8A and 8B to our March 20 meeting. Would someone like to make that motion?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. It, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's read item 8C into the record if we could.
Kelly Hilsen, on behalf of Thomas Villamore and Mountain Creek Realty LLC, requests a conditional use permit to allow a driveway at 10 to 12, 10 to 12 Higgins Place, map 641Z, Lot 33, at less than the required distance from an intersection and less than the required distance from the adjacent existing driveway in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District.
Okay, is the applicant here? Come on up. While they're getting settled, if you could get your name on that sheet there, and if we could get a staff update on this report, on this application, that would be great.
Okay. And so you're opening the public hearing?
Yeah, open the public hearing and get a staff report.
Staff report. So the board at the last hearing in January continued this to tonight's meeting, requesting the applicant to make some adjustments to the driveway to address turning radii.
Yep.
And the applicant has done that, and the applicant submitted a revised plan wherein he completely moved the driveway from the east portion of the site to the west portion of the site. And staff has reviewed it. It meets, staff does not feel that there's any issue with turning radii. It now is the farthest distance it can be from the adjacent driveway, given that it only has 80 feet of frontage. And by moving it from the east to the west, it now actually meets the separation distance requirement for the intersection. So the CUP request is only needed for the separation distance between the driveway. And just one note, and I've already confirmed this with the applicant, the zoning code requires a separation of five feet between the edge of asphalt of the driveway and the west property line. And there will be, when they install the driveway, there will be five feet, that required five feet.
To the inch.
To the inch, yes.
All right, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Sean Dunphy. I'm an attorney from Cronin, Bissin, and Zalinski, and I am here tonight on behalf of Mountain Creek Realty LLC.
All right, tell us a little bit about this. I think we heard most of the information and the details last month. I don't think you were here for that, right?
I was not.
Okay. But if you could give us a quick overview for members of the board on this project, and we'll go from there.
Sure. So, yes, so this property is 10 to 12 Higgins Place here in Concord. This property is on a dead-end street. After this property, it is currently a vacant lot. There is nothing else after it at this point, no other residential properties. The street ends, and as you know, because it was here last month, we are requesting a conditional use permit to install a driveway for the two single-family residences that will be constructed on this property. I believe you have the updated plan, but last month, the driveway was on one side of the property, and per request of this board, we went back and moved the driveway to the other side of the property to ensure that there is enough space for the abutting lots driveway. As Ms. Skinner stated, the driveway meets the requirements to the intersection of Herbert Street and Higgins Place, but we are within the 100 feet to the abutting driveway. And because of that, we need the conditional use permit. The lot in total has 80 feet of frontage, so we are as far away from the abutting driveway as the lot would allow. I'd be happy to go through the elements if you'd like.
Nope, that's fine. Questions from the board? Again, I think we saw this last month, you had some turning radius questions.
We do. Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I actually like this. One thing, I had a little confusion. When I dealt back into some of the site plan regulations, the site plan regulations actually say in Table 19-1, that you only need 40 feet for a residential separation between driveways and 40 feet to an intersection. But this is quoting a zoning regulation that has a difference. Which one governs?
Well, the strictest one governs when there's a conflict.
But why would they be different? If they're both referring to the exact same thing, why is one saying it's 125 feet spacing for residential to an intersection, and the other saying 40?
Well, in-
It's the district, not use.
Yes.
It's a non-residential district.
Okay.
And that's what governs it.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarity, because when I looked, went looking and I found that, I was like, they're good. They meet this. So.
I thought she was here to answer, because I had no idea.
And I appreciate that. I'm okay with the new. I think the separation, as far as we're going to get it on a dead-end road, I like the fact that it's flipping, so there's less conflict between the two adjacent driveways. I think they've done-
It's much better than the previous plan.
I think they've done a reasonable job at-
Okay, any questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Nope? See none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other comments from staff? I think it's pretty straightforward. So we'll use our findings of fact here, information that's been presented by the applicant, the information that's in your packet here to make our decision tonight. We've got 2.2 in your packet to grant the following conditional use permit approvals in accordance with 2878C1 of the zoning ordinance to allow for a driveway within 65 feet of an existing driveway where 100 feet of separation is required at 10 to 12 Higgins Place, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in conditions A through D. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move along. 8D in our record, in our agenda, if you could read that into the record.
Fieldstone Land Consultants, on behalf of Mike Gallo and Trademark Homes LLC, request minor subdivision approval to divide a 6.25 acre site into two residential lots subject to a common open space easement. Site is addressed as 119 Hoyt Road in the Open Space Residential District.
Okay, is the applicant here? Come on up. We will open the public hearing, and if we could get a quick staff update on this one. If you could sign in while you're waiting there.
As I said, this is a minor subdivision. The site exists with one house on it, and the applicant wishes to split off the northern portion of the site to build an additional house. The part of the motion when you open the public hearing is we need a determination of completeness.
Okay.
And no DRI.
Okay, no. It's on my sheet, and I probably didn't even look at it yet. Okay, so let's do that now. So there is a determination of completeness component. Staff has found the application complete and ready for a public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we are in the public session, and welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
I'm Dan Barowski with Fieldstone Land Consultants.
All right, Dan, tell us a little bit about this project if you could.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. As I said, my name is Dan Barowski, and I'm a surveyor with Fieldstone. And I'm here to present the two-lot cluster subdivision of Lot 07Z44. The property is located at 119 Hoyt Road and contains six and a quarter acres of land. The land is generally flat, however, there's a small area of steep slopes leading down to Hayward Brook in the rear of the property. The western portion of the lot has wetlands, and the eastern portion of the lot is currently developed as a single-family home and the associated improvements. The lot is located in the Open Space Residential, RO zoning district, which for a cluster subdivision requires 30,000 square feet lot size with 20,000 square foot buildable area, 120 feet of frontage, 30-foot front and rear setbacks, 20-foot side setbacks, and developments of four or fewer lots require a 50-foot perimeter buffer. We're proposing a two-lot subdivision, carving off the existing dwelling, and creating a new buildable lot behind it, which will gain access via a proposed easement over the existing sideline, which circumvents the wetlands all on the west side of the lot. Common open space is provided for both lots as required with the cluster subdivision, and we feel that this development's a reasonable use for a larger-sized lot. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. So the proposed driveway is in the right-of-way? It's in the, I'm just trying to figure it out. It looks like it's a shared entrance to the property, is that right?
So staff had a comment in the report that they determined that that easement was never legally transferred, so that there is no existing easement on the eastern portion of the lot. But we're proposing an access and utility easement to get to that second lot.
It's the northern portion of it that was never transferred. The agreement to convey was recorded, but the conveyance was never recorded.
Okay, I misunderstood that comment then. But yes, there is an existing but unutilized access easement over the eastern portion of the lot. I believe it's for one of the lots to the west of this.
How does that affect the driveway that's going through the-
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
No.
And it is a shared driveway? Or a portion of it's a shared driveway?
For the first very beginning of it, just to avoid another curb cut, and then it would-
I'm good with it. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I just wasn't sure where the line came down. I'm pretty sure that's what it was indicating, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Jeff?
Chairman, the only comment I have is, in the staff report, it says that the, under 2.6 is the drive, single-family driveway, should meet Section 20.09, 1.09, 20.09, 1 through 7. But since this is actually a shared driveway, it's got to meet the requirements under Table 20-1, which means the common drive portion has to be 18 feet wide. So it'll have to be 18 feet at the street and then split to two 10s. And that's basically, if one car is sitting in the driveway waiting to get out, somebody else comes to turn in, the car's not sitting out on the street waiting until the car in the driveway.
Give me a minute there on that. Because I went over both of those.
It's page 75 of the, and it says specifically, standards for residential common private drives, two dwelling units, 18 feet with one gravel shoulder.
How far up does it have to be, 18 feet?
It says common drive, so I'm assuming that's up until they physically split, because then they would become-
Split to 10/10s?
Two 10s.
How does that affect your project?
We'd be able to do that, I think, without a problem.
So if it's a condition of approval, you're okay with that? Make it eighteen feet, so it'll increase the curb cut a little bit?
Yep.
And then we can confirm that on the staff side. Okay. Other questions, comments from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application?
I...
Yeah.
I had just a couple of questions.
You gotta ask the question. You gotta go back and sit down and then come back up to ask the question, so. Okay, go ahead.
Just on, I think, two of the staff, or a couple of the staff comments requiring like a driveway profile and erosion control plan. I think those things would be better handled when a building permit is pulled, and I think there was a question about the finished floor elevation of the new house. None of that has been determined, or the house placement hasn't been hammered down by a potential buyer, so.
Lucky for you, we've got someone from engineering here that may be able to weigh in on that. Just pull it.
Yeah, yeah, actually, let me stick it out. I would prefer that that's provided.
Provided prior to?
Prior to.
Prior to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? From the staff?
One comment from staff is that I neglected to add a precedent condition requiring the, asking for the required documentation protecting the common open space. So in your motion, if you can add that along with the shared, or the common...
I will look to you to tell me when to add that, okay? So we've got precedent conditions one through fourteen on this.
Mr. Chair.
So we can put that in, yes?
Do you think there was one hand that did raise in the audience?
I'll grab that. Thank you. If you can just remind me when we're doing that, that would be great. Did we have a hand? Somebody go, oh, yes, sir, come on up. I'll have you step back if you can. Thank you. Thank you, Al. Good evening. How are you?
I'm well.
If you could state your name for the record?
John Mintkin. That's M-I-N-T-K-E-N.
Okay, welcome to the table.
Thank you. I own the lot right next to that, 119, 121.
So as I'm looking at the plan, you own the lot to the right?
Yeah, to the east of it.
Yep, John Mintkin. There you are.
My question is, you know, when I subdivided that lot off of my, I had enough road frontage to do two lots, and I subdivided it several years ago, and I'm holding it. I had to go through, everything, lot on that side of the road has to have 200 foot of road frontage. There was nothing that allowed me to have two, a single driveway accessing both of those lots. My eye level at 123 and going to, and I was, I was told by the board here that I couldn't do that. And that's what, and I'm hearing now that I can take that lot I have, 119, and do a single driveway off of my 123 and put the house there?
So it looks like, what, seven-Z five dash one is John and Gail Mintkin, and then right next to it is your primary residence? Is that right? So as I'm looking at it to the right, you've got a lot in between you and the developer next door here?
That's correct.
I can't answer the question as far as can you do it or not, but I...
Well, my question is, I couldn't do it.
I'll defer to staff to give you a general answer, but you'll want to seek some advice.
Generally, for your informa, just for your information, this is a cluster development, and the development standard requirements are different for a cluster development. It's not 200.
Is that recent? Because...
So clustered.
I know, the clusters, I was told, you know, on the other side of the road, you get all kinds of cluster development. But on our side of the road, it was required, and when I went down to get, you know, permits to do this stuff, I was told you had to have 200 foot of road frontage and not a common driveway. So what's changed in the last three, four years?
Well, that I can't answer, but...
Well, I think I want to object to what's going on, because I think that needs to be clarified to me and the neighbors, because on that side, everyone has 200 foot of road frontage, except that lot next to me has six acres, I granted. And I used to walk in it when I bought that lot in 1985. And it was, I was told back then, you know, you could, you have to have 200 foot of road frontage, and you have to have, you know, two acres behind it.
Were they developed as a cluster development?
None, none. There's no cluster developments on that side of the road at all.
But, and the cluster development requirements are different.
Yeah, but if you need, and you need, if on where I live, if you need 200 foot of road frontage, and you have to have two acres, and you're doing a house next to each other, makes it cluster development, then something's changed, and I don't understand why that's changed.
Well, if it came in as a single-family residential, that would still be the case, but if it came in as a cluster, right?
Yeah, but my question is, when did it cluster? Has it been able to cluster out there all the time, forever?
You've been more than three or four years ago, yeah, for sure.
Wow.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't have had a subdivide. I could have just put houses all next to me without going through the...
I'll through that. Now, there is some, you know, I don't, I can't tell from the plan set here where your driveway is on that, so if your driveway's on the other side, you may have to relocate the driveway to have a common shared driveway, but it's worth having, getting some advice on, instead of having someone look at it.
You mean not city?
No.
You know, I came to the city for advice. I obviously got the wrong advice. So you gotta question your planning board. Whoever I talked with years ago, and even when I subdivided this, 2017, they put me through hell to get that subdivision.
A good real estate attorney probably wouldn't be a bad investment to maybe take a look at the two plan sets and figure out if you can do the development.
Well, there are a lot of wetlands out there. It's gonna be interesting.
In the back, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So what, on that design, where's that other house gonna go?
In the back.
In the back of the one that's existing there?
Yeah. Up around the corner, kind of pulls it around the back. I don't have it up on the screen there, but.
Wow. It's, you know, there's six acres there. When they put that house up, it's interesting. They're putting it 10 feet from my property line, wherever the minimum is. It's minor, and they're gonna do the same thing again?
Yeah.
Well, I think, why don't they put it on the rest of the six acres that's there? I mean, I don't understand why they have to cluster it right next to me.
The site has wetlands, and that...
Yeah, and you can't do wetland, yeah.
So it has wetlands, and then that means it has a wetland buffer. You can't do anything in that, and it has a requirement for common open space. So really, the buildable area is very limited, once you, once you account for all of those factors.
Yeah, if you look at, if you go online and look at the agenda for tonight's meeting and look at the plan set that's there, you'll see all the wetlands up on the left-hand side of the...
Well, I live there. I know where they're...
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, there's certain requirements. You can't build a, and you got a 50 feet here. You've got to have an envelope size for the buildable space. So did you have any concerns other than, other than what happened there, with this particular project?
That's, yeah, well, that concern, but, you know, I just don't know how it got through. I just don't understand. You know, it's like when I moved out there and I bought that lot, next to me, there's a small house there. They got all the permissions to do a school there that they wanted. And I see, they're getting, there was a, you know, allotment made for that and kind of stuff. They were nice. It was a nice, it was a monastery school. They were nice, but then they wanted to put big parking lots there because they wanted to put another building there. City came this close because, lo and behold, someone on that school board was a member here, and he didn't disavow his vote.
Yeah.
And I wonder if that's what's happening on this subdivision right now, because there's someone involved in that.
I just note, because we're looking at a, at a plan, and the new house that's going in, the proposed site for that house is further from your property than the existing house is, just for your own information. You should...
Yeah, it is a little bit further away from the line.
So I would, I would ask that you delay your vote on this until I have a chance to look at that, because I got this in the mail not that long ago.
Okay. Any questions? No? Thank you for your testimony. Any other member of the audience have any questions or concerns? Close the public hearing. Any other staff comments, questions, board? Okay, so I don't know that we need to delay this. It's not gonna change the report that's in front of us. It may change the person's feedback for his development as he goes forward, but I don't see anything here that's gonna cause us to stop this, this project. So in your packets, again, using the information that we've received tonight, the packets of information that you've got as our findings of fact to bring a decision forward, we've got a fairly lengthy precedent conditions outlined in 3.2 to the granting the minor subdivision approval with precedent conditions one through fourteen, and we're gonna add 15 as a precedent condition, and what will that be?
Correct. That will be, the applicant shall show compliance with section 28 dash four dash seven, G two of the zoning ordinance.
And that, that's for what?
That's for the common open space protection.
Mr. Chairman, I might. We also have one more for the 18-foot-wide common drive up until...
Right, I was just gonna say, is that gonna be, is that a precedent? That's gotta be a precedent condition as well. So 16 will be a precedent condition to...
Provide an 18-foot wide driveway up to the common driveway split in conformance with Table 20 dash two of those site plan regulations, subdivision regulations.
Got that? Somebody's got that? Thank you. So that's 15 and 16 were added into there. So again, in your packet, we've got a request to grant minor subdivision approval for the subdivision at 119 Hoyt Road, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. And again, we outlined those precedent conditions one through 16, and then subsequent conditions one through five. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made by Earl, seconded by David. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much. And we will move on on our agenda. Next item on the agenda is Item 8E Bedford Design Consultants. If we could read that into the record?
Bedford Design Consultants, Inc., on behalf of Daniel...
Legu.
Legu and Valerie Viness, request approval of a conditional use permit for the disturbance of a wetland buffer in conjunction with construction or installation of uses, which require the placement of impervious surfaces and/or the grading of land within the buffer. The site is addressed as Eight Fiscal Farm in the Open Space Residential District.
Eight Fiscal Farm. All right. Welcome to the table. We will open the public hearing. I think the DNR's already been done for this. Has been...
DNR?
DNR, sorry.
We do need to determine it completely.
We do?
Yeah.
A DNR. Look at me.
We don't need the DRI.
We don't need a DRI. I was looking at the wrong sheet, sorry. So we have a determination of completeness component within this. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, open the public hearing, and determine that this is not a development of regional impact?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing's open. If you could state your names for the record?
I'm Craig Francisco with Bedford Design Consultants.
I'm Daniel Leguer. I'm the owner of that property.
Great. Welcome to the table. If you can hang tight for just a sec, we'll get a staff update on this project.
Okay.
All right.
This is the last lot, Lot eight, in a developed subdivision. As the applicant will explain, there are significant restraints on the site for them to accomplish the building of a house and not have the drainage, the stormwater drainage flow towards the house. There's grading that needs to take place that has to occur in the wetland buffer. In addition to that grading, they also want a backyard and a swimming pool, and so that those accessory uses, that is allowed under the terms of the conditional use permit, if approved. This did go to Conservation Commission, and Conservation Commission recommended approval with the caveat that they adjust the grading, the house, the yard, et cetera, to the greatest extent possible, and that, and then staff has added a condition to re-vegetate any disturbed soils.
Re-vegetate. All right. I got your name. Tell us a little bit about the project.
Yes, this lot was created in 1983. Sort of a cluster back then, actually, but the declaration that was attached with the whole subdivision limits where you can build the houses. There's a circle shown on the subdivision plan in 1983, which this lot has to build in 25 feet of the center of that circle, which puts us, I believe, in the one plan, you'll see the circle, but anyway. So that's one issue. We have to build a house within 25 feet of the center of the circle, which puts us on the side of the hill. The other issue is getting the driveway up the hill, because you've got to build up there. So we show a driveway that starts out about 5%, goes to 10% to get up the hill, then it flattens out for a little bit of a parking area, and then into the garage. We have a 10-foot-high basement, partly because that gives us two more feet in elevation to get up the hill with the first floor. We show the septic design, all those kind of things. We're proposing, well, if you look at the one map, you'll see that the backyard is basically, if there was no grading done, would be five feet away from the building, it'd be uphill. So we've got to regrade that so the runoff doesn't get to the house, and that's really the whole purpose of this, is to keep the runoff from the backyard, the backyard from going into the house. We do have letters from wetland scientists that said that the plan would not change or impact the function and values of the wetlands. We also did contact the Hampshire Heritage Bureau, and has nothing, no invasive or no sensitive species in the area. Basically, that's it in a nutshell. I think the plans and report pretty much speak for the site.
So is this an 11-acre lot? Am I reading that right?
Yes, with about 4,400 square feet of buildable area.
About what?
4,400 square feet of buildable area.
Holy cow.
I think this...
It doesn't show on my plan, but what's all, is it all wetlands to the left?
Do you have a second sheet? Second sheet has some colors on it.
Yeah, I went right by that, sorry.
On this sheet, you can see the, I got the circle showing, the blue is a 25% slope. The green is, I think, 15%, if I remember right, and the white up on top is where the buildable area is, but you can see a dashed line going through here. That's the wetlands buffer. Yes, we've got the little area right here built.
How long's the driveway?
Eight hundred feet. Maybe nine, eight or 900 feet. Well, I can tell you this is a...
If you get to 800 feet, it doesn't matter if you go to 900 feet at that point, right?
No, it doesn't. It's, this plan shows the whole grading. Drive, we have, we moved, there's an existing driveway here that we slid down, because you can't get the turning radius for trucks to get in and out of there for the construction, so we had to slide the driveway down. So it's like 5% through here, then we go up to about 10 through here, and then here it flattens out to about 2 to get to the garage.
Does fire have to weigh in on this? Life safety?
Fire, fire didn't have any comments. It's under 1,000 feet.
It's under, okay. Okay. Questions from the board? Jeff?
So I see, I believe staff had asked to see a driveway profile to make sure that it meets the city standard, because this looks like it goes up away from the road, and we do require a dip.
Well, yeah, we have that.
Okay, it's not, there's no way to tell from this plan, so I believe staff had asked for driveway profile. I'm also...
I thought I had a squat elevation, but it doesn't matter. I can show one. I can do a profile.
Yeah, just as long as they're happy, I'm happy. I just want to make sure. The other thing is, what is happening with the existing portion of the driveway? Are you removing that, taking the pipe out, and lomming and seating that?
Yes, but I don't, I'm not sure there's a pipe. Is there a pipe there?
There's a pipe under the existing.
Yes, yeah, take that out.
It's just, again, not called out here. The only other question I had is, there is an actual 18-inch CMP that actually goes, I can get this to work, from this side of the road toward the pond, and I know, was this area also checked for wetlands down along the road, because you would have work?
Yes.
That could be within, okay. Because the culvert's not shown on that plan. I just want to make sure.
We checked wetlands everywhere from the road up.
Okay.
We didn't check the rest of the property, obviously.
The only, only thing I... The only, only thing I saw, and this is just trying to understand, I understand there are certain restrictions on the property, and in the section you highlighted, it specifically says no buildings, outbuildings, barn, or other structure. In terms of that regulation, is the pool considered a structure?
To be honest, I don't know, but I know Dan went to the homeowner association and they were all happy with the plan.
Just, just because it's specifically in this covenant, and I'd hate to you get building and then one of your neighbors suddenly says, hey, this is an issue.
They did see the plans, they did see, they did approve everything when we...
So they had, you have something in writing from them approving?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I'd hate to have a...
Get all the...
I can tell she wants to...
Yeah, Ben there done that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just, I just read it and I'm like, wow, that would really kind of change that restriction.
A building code does not consider a swimming pool a structure.
But they do the wall that's going to be around the bottom of the slope.
Right, but it's, it's not considered a structure per se.
They do consider retaining walls over four feet a structure and they issue a building permit for those. They don't issue building permits for pools.
Right, but if, but here again, this, I'm just trying to understand the definition of structure in this recorded document for the property.
And, and that's a good question. I don't think they provided definitions.
They didn't, and that's why, I mean, I'm fine, the homeowner and they've all got it sorted out with their organization, I just don't want this to come back because somebody appeals it later on if we can avoid that. That's all. Not trying to stop you from doing it, I just want to make sure you don't get into legal issues if we can.
Okay. Other questions on the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about the application? Nope. Close to public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. Any other comments from staff?
Did this, did you guys sign in?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Nothing else from staff? So we will look at this for, again, using the information that we've received tonight as our findings of fact, the materials that were provided in our packet and the testimony we heard to, to come up with a decision. Two point one in your packet is to grant conditional use permit approval in accordance with article twenty-eight, four, three D to allow for the disturbance of wetland buffer for grading a yard, a swimming pool, and retaining wall as presented in the application, subject to the precedent and subsequent conditions noted below, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one, two, and three, and subsequent conditions one, two, three, and four. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item eight F in our agenda, Christ the King Parish. If we could read that into the record?
Christ the King Parish requests major site plan approval for construction of a new fifty-three-hundred-square-foot building and related site improvements for the purpose of a food pantry at sixty South Main Street in the urban transitional district.
Okay, and while the applicants are getting settled in, if you could, if you could fill out the little form that's on the table there and recognizing that this, we don't have a DNR, we don't have a determination of completeness component in this, so we'll look for a staff update if we can.
Sure. There's an existing food pantry there, they're looking to rebuild and upsize. The applicant has requested two waivers, which staff is in support of. The ADR recommended a conditional approval, one of those was being if the lighting plan was to change between when they went before ADR and now that be submitted previously. Staff did not receive an updated lighting plan, and ADR just wanted to also point out that their solar panels proposed on the roof of this structure. Staff is recommending conditional approval of this application, and there are two public comments, one was with the planning board agenda, one we received this evening that was in front of all of you to consider as well.
Right. Great, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Jonathan Holly, I'm with Warren Street Architects.
My name is Morgan Dunson, I'm with Nobus Group, I'm the civil engineer.
My name is Father Richard Roverson, I'm the pastor of Christ the King Parish.
Welcome back, Father Rich, and tell us, Jonathan, about the, about the project.
I'm gonna let Morgan run through.
Well, Morgan, you're on.
I'll run through it.
All right.
Hi, thank you. So this project is to demolish the existing food pantry that is located on Christ the King Food Pantry, Christ the King Campus, located on South Street. This site is currently developed, it has six buildings on it. There is the existing church, the community center, Berry Hall, Directory, and St. John's School. This site is mostly a parking lot area, and the area of our project is where the existing food pantry is, oh, as you can see, here's a flyover.
I think it has a pointer.
Yep, there we go, okay, so, just trying to re, okay, so we are on South Street right now, looking right at the food pantry entrance, so the entrance is on the right side. Here is the secondary entrance to the site. Come along, so there's the entrance. I don't know if you want to talk about the building at all, going around the site. So over here we have, this is the loading area for where the food donations will be dropped off. This is the secondary entrance to the building with a little porch area. This is a parking area, there's three spots right here, additional parking is along this side. There is a fence that does separate the food pantry from the parking lot, so people do park on this side, they can just exit out of their cars, there's a sidewalk, and then they would go through this gate to the front of the building. Go inside.
Yep, so the, the use has been here for almost forty years, and Father Rich can speak to that further. The, we looked at multiple locations to place this on the campus. We actually tried to put it behind the rectory, and for different reasons, stormwater being the biggest one, in fact, all of the electric is underground to the church itself at the back of, back of the rectory. So the, the program here is that the food pantry is getting bigger, basically that, to support the volunteers that, that are distributing all of this. This is in a very small building currently on, on the property, just behind the community center, if you will, that will be demolished. There's storage, there is a basement in the building that will house a lot of things that are currently stored in the garage and a couple of sheds that are on the property that will be removed. And the back, more than two-thirds of the building is, is warehousing, if you will, in the back for goods that come in. The loading dock in the back is actually inside the building, and the garage allows them to park the pickup truck that they use for deliveries. So there is nothing big, there are no tractor trailers coming to the, to the project. They're going to store their, the pickup truck inside the garage, and there's a loading dock twenty-four feet back so that the volunteers can unload from there. I don't know, Father, is there anything you want to add?
I think you've covered, I mean, it's, the main thing is that the building will be, is designed to be more user-friendly and the dignity of our, our clients as well as the dignity of our volunteers. We have over a hundred volunteers, and some of them are older folks. Right now, everyone has to go down in the basement and bring up all the stock or bring it down there. This will all be on one floor, it'll be all, no, how do they say?
Handicap accessible?
Yeah, no, no barrier, barrier-free environment, which is great, because right now, if someone has a wheelchair or a walker, they can't get into the food pantry. Right now, a food pantry is not big enough for people to really come in, and during COVID, we didn't have anyone come in, but even now, they prepare boxes. This will be more like a shopping, little, little market, so they can go and actually choose the foods they want, the volunteer. And so it's just, it's really an upgrade. We have some, some small offices to be able to sit down with clients and get their personal information. Right now, it's wide in the open, you know, you ask them their income and background. We have a lot of working, working poor, or people that, you know, having a hard time meeting both ends. Just yesterday, I understand that we're twenty, twenty-three families yesterday, and four or five of them were with children, you know? And so it's really an upgrade so that we can better serve. We don't anticipate, right now it's four days a week in the evening, we have one shift that's from six to eight, and then we, the other two days it's seven to nine, so it's a, it's in the evening, so it really doesn't have an impact on our school or neighbors. And I've been there thirteen years and we hadn't had no problems with the food pantry. And the food pantry actually been on our campus at different places for forty-eight years. It started in nineteen seventy-five, and it's been serving people. It started in the rectory, then went to the garage, then it went into Berry Hall, then it went into the present building, went back to Berry Hall, then went back to the present building, you know? So that's what I have, I don't know if...
So I just want to mention a couple of things. I, I think you're going to hear some feedback from parents from the school and perhaps a neighbor across the street on South State Street. A gentleman did reach out to me and we discussed some lighting. We've made accommodations, we've removed the light pole.
It's on here. Yes, dear. Sorry. Yep. It's the one that says light, revised light plan on the bottom, there you go. All right, I don't know if you can zoom in on that. Yeah, we replaced, so there used to be a, a standing pole, light pole, right, here on this landscape island. This plan has been revised to include...
I'm not smart enough to move it, sorry.
It's okay. There we go. So now there are two wall mount, mounted packs on the side of the building that shed light onto just these little parking spots right here for safe travels on the sidewalk to the front of the building.
So the pole light was deleted and the wall packs do have cutoffs, so the light will be directed directly to the...
Did you see our Delta Dental conversation last month? You didn't catch that on the...
Uh-oh.
Okay, no. Are these downward-facing lights?
Yes, sir.
He didn't miss much.
Yeah, yeah.
He's really overselling it.
Sorry, go ahead.
And I'm sure that there's some conversation, so the intent is that we're going to meet with the parents at the school over the next couple of weeks. I do expect that there would be potentially some changes. They're concerned about walking path from the elementary school to Berry Hall, which is proposed right now, this is the school, and right now, it's just, they walk across, the backside of the community center is actually where the dumpsters and whatnot exist today that was all going to stay. What we're, what I'm proposing to work out with some of the parents are, is actually to modify these islands so that the walkway cuts directly through and would be clearly delineated, painted on the, on the pavement that gets you to Berry Hall over here. I'm sure there are other issues that we can talk about. There was some mention of additional tree plantings here along the street.
I can comment to that.
Sure.
If you go to the utility plan, all of our underground utility connections to the site, oh, it's really hard to see, if you can just zoom in maybe, so we have connection to water, the existing connection to water, and South State Street is also...
I told you, not smart enough to move it.
It's okay. Is also, I believe, under, what is it called, moratorium? Yep.
Yep.
So that is the reason why we are proposing to reuse the existing water and sewer services. So all the utilities are going through the, the front of the building, so that is the reason why no large trees were proposed in the front. So that is where utilities go. I can also go through more technical stuff, or do you have any questions so far?
Quick question, so you, you said that you're not able to put shade trees or any kind of tree on the front because of the utilities being underground in that area.
Yep, so we have a drainage line, a sewer line, and a water line, all right up.
So along the other street where the walkway goes under a covered pathway, remind me again, is, are there some proposed plantings there and maybe on the other side that is...
We had plantings there that came out.
Here's a kind of prettier color rendering that shows the proposed green areas and trees.
There will be, there will be some...
Is this side you're talking about?
No, it was more closer to the building itself.
All right, so, yeah, if we go back to the utility plan?
Yes, correct, the driveway.
There's also an overhead wire that goes to this utility pole right here, so that is why there are no shade trees.
Also, it probably would be difficult for, for snow removal on that side of the building, because it's not really super wide, so for plowing, it'd be hard to put trees...
We are putting low shrubs along that bottom edge and along the front to North State Street. We had a tree there, staff asked us to take it out.
Okay, because of the overhead.
Right, okay, and shade trees in the parking area? I see there's this little island over on the, I say northeast corner there, and on the west side, just go back to the other tab. There's that one there, and there's the east side, northeast side, yes, the one you're pointing, and then on the west side, and that's pretty much from what I hear you saying, there is no other option for more shade trees to be in that parking area.
We could probably add one more tree, maybe like right here, since we got rid of the light pole.
Mr. Chairman, if I understood you correctly, those ones in the northeast are going to be gone because you're going to put a sidewalk there now, potentially.
No, 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 the sidewalk runs right, right here.
No, you just said from the school to your new parent, you're going to modify those islands to have the path through there, was now remove all those trees.
So my intention is to answer the concerns of the parents of the school. The trees that are there now are required by count, so the tree's going to go somewhere. If we move it, it, you know, if, if I can come back with an amended plan and planning says we can do this administratively, we'll take care of it. If not, I'll be back to the planning board with a revised plan sometime in the future here.
So I, my concern is, as we all know, to create some shade trees in areas that, that just so we don't have these, these small little heat islands, as we all are trying to prevent that from happening. So I would be sad to see those, if that were the case, to eliminating, I know you said they're going to go somewhere, but it'd be sad to see them go.
Well, this one, this one is going to have to stay. This is part, this is a tree box, so this is part of our drainage controls, it's, it treats stormwater, so we have two tree bo, treat, two tree boxes that are proposed on the site, one right here that collects all of this runoff, treats it, and puts it back into the system. Where before, the water is not being treated, it's just running off into the city system, and then we have another tree box right here. So those two really can't be removed.
That's a good thing. I was, and, and in response to the potential pathway to connect, was, I noticed that that would potentially eliminate some of those trees. We would hope that they would stay because, again, we would like to have shade trees in the parking area.
Hundred percent.
So I think that that would be, my advice is not to lose them, but to have some workaround as, as a response to that, and I'm, I'm not one of the parents at St. John's, but there is, the, with the exist, the, the food pantry is existing and it is there. The hours of operation, can you remind me of that for the food pantry?
Six, six to eight, or seven to nine. There's going to be, there's four days, and so they may be making one an hour earlier for some of our older volunteers who don't like to go home late, and, and we're finding that people stay later so that the nine o'clock goes to the nine-thirty, ten o'clock before they go home.
But hours of operation are PM.
Yes, there, there's nothing going on during school hours, except sometimes volunteers may be in there stocking the shelves. Even, even, we always organize, even deliveries, they're, they're done from, in the organization, they go to, to wholesale, and they go to New Hampshire Food Bank, and so they organize themselves so that they're not there when it's primary time for the students to be in the school.
That's helpful to know.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
Okay, Jeff. So I'm trying to understand, you have on the side of the building this
little driveway that comes up to the, this walkway that comes out to the one-way roadway.
Are we talking this?
Yep. What's the point of that?
That exists today.
Yeah, so this is an existing...
Not the one-way. I'm talking specifically, what's the point of this walkway?
Oh, that, that connects to existing house. Oh, this one right here.
This here?
The proposed walkway conti, what is, the reason I'm asking is because I can see that as somebody pulling up, wanting to stop there, run in, do their business, and come out, and that driveway would then not support that.
There is no driveway there. There is no, there is no driveway.
Alleyway is there.
The alleyway, but if you're looking at that, that was right there.
That's the proposed walkway to the new building.
Just right here.
So what I'm trying to understand is, is if, if all the people are parking to pick up on the other side, why is that necessary?
I don't think it is. I'm trying to go back. It was not there originally, and I'm just questioning whether it was a staff comment at one point.
Because if so, I mean, it'd be nice if we could maybe take a little bit more, widen that alleyway up a little bit, because I went out there a couple times to review it, and people were parked for the house next door.
Yeah, they're parked illegally, actually, on our property.
And they were parked with the rear end out into that alleyway, and I just...
They were on our property, actually.
Right. And that's another one of my questions in terms of usage.
But that, 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 that little cut there, what do you, can I have the prints?
Right here?
You can tell me if I'm wrong. You're the architect. How do you, how do you print this thing?
This is fun.
You can see it all.
It's got them on both sides.
Right there, this thing here, that does not exist.
Right. No, it doesn't today.
Yeah, not today.
But that's what I'm saying, for the proposed, why is it needed?
I don't see that it should be proposed. It's a, it's a curb cut or a cut into someone else's property, and we have no intention of giving them a cut into that alley.
Right. Or it's into the alleyway, and I was just worried that somebody would stop in the alleyway to run inside, pick up something, and block. And if that's something that can go away...
That was a mistake. I, you know, with all due respect, that's a mistake. Because it was also in the rendering in the video, there was a, you know, and it didn't exist, and we have no intention of putting one in there. But we'll, we can talk about that.
So maybe, like, that little bit of bow can be taken out and maybe make sure there's enough width if people are parking there.
Yeah, I think we can widen it up.
The other kind of concern, a question I had was, you show the telephone pole proposed by the loading dock. If I measured it correctly, it's a two-foot island. If you have two curbs on both sides, the chances of you setting that pole perfectly, working, my, over my experience with utility companies, you're not gonna get in there perfect. So is it possible to consider moving it to this side, and that would actually facilitate your connection that you have existing that you're realigning, and then you could just go under the alleyway? That just takes that conflict point out of that tight area. Then, we do that, also gives you the ability to plant trees there, potentially along the building, because they're no longer necessarily under the power line.
It won't be the first pole that we can't get in, and we've got to move during construction, so.
I just, it's so tight that my fear is they're gonna just put a break in the curb, set the pole.
Right. I think it was set there originally because there is a, it's kind of hard to tell, there's a shed right here. Put a pole right here, you're, we're connecting to a utility pole that's right there. So I think it, I think in the design...
That shed is gonna go away.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just thinking that might be an idea, because now if we do that, now you've got the ability to maybe add trees in here again, because we're not under utility line, it's gonna be diagonal. So there might be a little bit more space to get. This helps you, because you're trying to get some trees back in. And it's just that, and, and you have flanking signs, I noticed, for your do not enter.
Mm-hmm.
The thirty-inch. You've got a two-foot island. They're not gonna last. So I would suggest keep the one on the left, maybe consider working with engineering if they're okay, we take the one out in the island. Just, because most of it, it's not like a street where there's a lot of traffic. It's people who are going to those other buildings on site. I just, I just don't, they're gonna get damaged, they're gonna be torn down and never put back, so maybe avoiding that. That might be...
I think those are good suggestions.
And then maybe, sorry, one more, Mr. Chairman, then I'll stop.
Yes, yep.
So when you're coming from the parking lot side, so maybe directly on the bottom, put a no, just for clarification, here, have a no right turn sign.
Got it.
So that that way, that helps kind of facilitate not having to have that extra do not enter.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
That's pretty much where I was. Thank you.
Suzanne will be proud of you, Jonathan.
I know. She should. She's, she'll be at home all excited.
She's saying, good, go, Jeff. That's Matt.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think I meant to ask some of these, I'm just going to confirm. So the food pantry has been on the campus in several, in different positions for many years.
Three, eight years.
And not open to the public during school hours. You confirmed that for me. And you're going to meet with the parents of the school, and you have not yet done so.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, especially reading this letter from a parent, many of the concerns in here seem to be more between the school parents and the church, or for this project. And I'm concerned if we don't give them an opportunity to have this discussion, then we're gonna hear testimony, they're gonna have a discussion, they're gonna solve a lot of these problems, and then they're gonna come back.
Yep.
So I don't know if I can make a recommendation, but I would suggest that they have an opportunity to talk to his parents before we move forward to the decision tonight on this.
Okay.
I would second that.
Okay.
I agree.
Other thoughts around that? Thoughts from the applicant?
I don't think anything major's gonna change. I mean, with, you know, we'll listen, and we're gonna do some, some minor tweaks. But there's some of the concerns they have. For example, I read that the junior high will not be seen by the, by the St. John Regional School. Reality is, they're gonna see more of it, because the building where it is now actually blocks the junior high. If you want to show me this, so right there.
This is where it is.
That's where the, that's where the present food pantry is, and that completely blocks the junior high. They'll have great, great view from the school, and I would, you know, their cameras can be adjusted to have a better, a better view of the, of the junior high. They'll be able to see the students walk right across. Right now, they have a little alleyway, says Sister Irene Lane, which is between the food pantry and the, and the playground. And actually, I think that's a pretty dangerous, because the kids are running, and, and, and they, then they get right into that little roadway. And so now it's gonna be much more wide, wide open, and we may put a stop sign or something to make sure that when they come in, they, people stop before they go around the corner. So I think that we can take care of those things internally, because the church and the school work together. And I don't think we're gonna have major, major changes.
Okay. So and again, usually with these types of things, our, our purview in this is the building itself, and, and how it's used, and how it's placed, and, you know, all the fundamental things that go into good planning to say you've gotta have turning radiuses, you gotta have parking, you gotta have access.
And we don't expect a lot of those things, if any of those things.
We don't expect a lot of those to change. What's gonna be issues is, is the security issues and the concerns about moving around the, the campus and things like that, which again, i- is an important piece, and we wanna, we wanna give people a chance to, I'm sure not everybody's here for the, the parking garage that's coming up after you guys, and then with the meetings over. I'm sure most of the people are here for, for this testimony that you guys are giving, the questions that are coming, and then maybe to give us some testimony. So chance, the, the chances of us coming back to you and, and giving everybody a chance to say something, having a, you know, some direction from us to come back and say, I don't see any major issues with the building. I think there's some little, you know, issues that you guys can resolve. But I do want to hear from the folks here. You, you hear that feedback, you've got a roadmap, and then go from there. See, see what, everybody could come up and say they love it and, and, you know, but I don't know if they will or not, so.
I think we have some concerns.
We'll take, I'm sure we do, and based on the letter that we got, I'm sure there's gonna be some people who have some concerns. But are there other issues with the building itself, aside from the, the issues that there? I did have a question on the, the bump out on the back of the building, near the loading dock, and I'm guessing that that's a downstairs access, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, I didn't look far enough along, but...
Mr. Chairman, I did have, apologies, one other question. Now that I know your nighttime hours, I didn't see any other lighting above doorways and whatnot shown on the plan or on the lighting. Are there other lights?
There are lights in the ceiling of the porch, the entryway. There's a light over the, the door, the exit door from the, from the garage, and there's a pole light over here. So we're illuminated all the way around.
Right. But are those lights on the building somehow captured on the lighting plan, if they're external?
I could get them added on to the light.
Yeah, I just want to, because there was such a question from the Butters, I want to make sure that we're getting an accurate representation.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, the intent here is to get approval. We don't want to miss the summer construction schedule. It's really imperative that we start when school is over, so that there's not a whole year disturbance to the school. And I can tell you that it is our intent, and Father Rich can speak to this, is that we do want to meet with the parents. We do want to hear, this has been a long time coming. I know that the, the city was actually an applicant for, for grant money, CDBG monies that the diocese turned down. So that, that took almost nine months to resolve. This is, this thing has been delayed almost a year and a half already. I'd hate for it to sit a couple more months.
Well, let's see what people say, and we'll kind of go from there. Understand your, your concerns, and understand, again, uniquely understand that you want to do it when the kids aren't there, which, which makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, Father Rich?
And I know there were some issues about safety. We obviously want the safest campus we can have, possibly, for our students, for our parishioners, for the people coming to the food pantry. And I know as far as the fire department, they've, they've already reviewed everything, so that part of the safety. As far as with children, again, our programs are all at night, so it's not gonna affect the kids. And I think we have a pretty safe building. So I, I don't, I don't see what they're, you know, so we're willing to hear what it is, but I don't think that there's any major safety issues.
Okay. What's the, open to the, open to the public? So the public's gonna be, be able to come in?
Yes, it's open to anyone who wants food.
Open anyone, right. That's why I wanted to just confirm.
There's no, there's no food served there.
Right.
It's only a food pantry, not a, a soup kitchen.
Come in, drop off, come in and pick up. And Jonathan, or...
Morgan.
Morgan, existing grade and elevation, I know you've got a dip down in the back for the, for the loading dock area, and it looks like you built that up. Is that existing grade? Is that, you build, you're not excavating and putting down?
No, it's pretty much...
You're building on, okay.
The, the, the loading dock is only a pickup, tailgate of a pickup. It's not typical...
Right. It's not typical all the way down like a, like a box truck.
And it's inside, and it's inside the garage.
Right. Matt?
Quick question. So before we hear from the public, or the board hears from the public, the church, the school on the property is owned and operated by the diocese?
No, the school is part of the parish property.
Parish property?
It's parish property.
All right. So it's parish property?
In essence, the school and the parish are part of the diocese.
Are part of the diocese. So, okay, so they're all related. So, so...
So we have primary responsibility for the school as far as the building, so we, we share a big portion for, for maintenance, for roof and all that stuff. They have, they have to give a certain percentage, but, so we're responsible for the building.
Right, okay. But it's, it's on your property, so it's part of your campus. It's not at a budding, it's not a separate parcel. It's on your property, and these are...
All our property.
Okay, thank you.
The church, the parish center, everything.
Does that change things any, anything at all?
No, I just wanted, I'm sure the board will hear testimony from the Butters, but this is an operation that is essentially part of the diocese, that's on the diocese property. I'm not saying that that's unimportant or not. It's just, it's a nuance. I want to make sure everybody understood that the school is related to, it's part of the larger operation of, of the campus of, of the church.
I also just wanted to state that we are asking for two waivers. I did forget to say that.
Yeah, you didn't want to mention that.
So we're asking for a waiver for the site plan regulation eighteen-ten for driveway width. And our driveway width is proposed as fourteen, oh my God, sorry. I want to blind you over there. Right here is fourteen feet, and I believe that the minimum, minimum, I think it's eighteen feet. You correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe, so that's the first waiver that we were asking, and as you had suggested, as taking away this, that little divot, and may make it straighter, we might get more. I don't know if it is, will be eighteen feet, so I'm still gonna...
No, I don't think it's eighteen, but what, if you can go from fourteen here, kind of a straight line, side of this corner of the building?
Correct, so...
You can't touch the curb cut.
I just want to clarify, your driveway width, the narrow was, you have a, you're the narrow is at twelve feet, and where fourteen is the minimum.
Right, twelve feet at seventy feet into the driveway right here.
And fire is in support of this waiver.
Sorry, so twelve feet at seventy feet. So seventy feet in, it dips into twelve?
Seventy feet into the, into the driveway, it goes to twelve feet right here.
And it's fourteen all the way around, other than that?
Yeah, it goes, it's fourteen right here, and it gets a little bit bigger right here, and then it, yeah.
And fire was okay with that?
Yeah, and that has to do with others. The property, property line is right here, there's the fence, the shed.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
The second waiver was to allow underground utilities.
Any questions on that from the board? No?
Or not allow under, sorry. That was not it.
To not require you to do underground all the way from the street in.
I just ran in, and I was like, that's not right.
We knew what you meant.
Is to allow us to have overhead electric wires, which is how the site already gets electric.
And, and again, that, that's one that we, we go back and forth on, and we'll, we'll deny it a lot of times for new developments, but with existing stuff like this, it's logical that you don't have to, to put it underground. That said, yes.
On the poles, these are owned by you or the utilities?
That's a good question. I'm not sure.
On the site, it'd probably be owned by you, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I would think that...
Well, the electric utilities will put in one pole, if it's there.
They've been there long enough that they may be owned by the utility.
And just follow up to that, is it just electricity? There's no telephone or anything on those poles?
I think it is.
I'm leading the witness here.
I think it is telecom.
Yeah, it's both.
I think it's both.
It's both?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's two, multiple lines.
Is there a concern there?
Well, yeah, you're now, it's just, you're...
Multiple owners.
Inserting the telephone consolidated and the electric company.
Yep.
And it's a jointly owned pole, I assume, and that, that can add to your timeline and expense. So I just, you might want to look into that.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right, we'll send you guys back, and...
Thank you.
We'll look for folks, if you've got a, if you want to come up and, and speak to this application, we'll ask for brevity, and there should be a sheet somewhere as you come on up. Maybe, Morgan, can you put the sheet on the table, and we'll pick people up on the table that want to come up? So if you want to come up, come on up, and we'll, who's first? Okay, come on up. And we'll have you sign in after you, after you give us some testimony. And then whoever's next and wants to sit in the chair, we'll go from there. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Thank you. Ann Marie Timmons. I'm at sixty-two South State Street. My husband is away, so he can't be here. My neighbors have a tiny baby, and eight-thirty is really late, so they're not here either. So I want to begin by saying, this is, I really want to be heard on this. I, we do not oppose this project. And we talked to Father Robert. It's remarkable, remarkable to me, they've been doing this work for as long as they have in that building. It's super unsafe, and I do think this is a much more dignified experience for their clients. I do have some concerns. It looks like the light pole has been removed, which I'm glad to see. I spent a lot of time with this plan. It would be good to see what the new sort of impact of those building lights would be. The lights don't go on, off at night in the church, so I think that is something to consider. I thought I heard mentioned that this food pantry will go in the place of the existing one. I might have misheard that, but I want to be clear, this is a new location. It's gonna be right outside our door. We don't have an ocean view there, for sure, but we have a bright view. We have a really nice parking lot where kids play at night, basketball, and it's just a nice, bright spot. This will change that dramatically. And again, I don't oppose it, but I would like to make sure it's not going to be a glow at night. Our bedroom looks right over that. The landscaping, I think I've lost that argument. It looks like there can't be any more shade trees put in there. I would love it if there could be. I hope that one tree that is there stays there. And having lived on South State Street for twenty-plus years, I can tell you it's not the safest street in town. People, especially since it's nice and flat now, people really take advantage of it.
It's nice and flat? Is that what you said?
It's all repaved and beautiful. It's made people go faster. I actually think the potholes might have been safer.
Are there more... Are there more cars parked in the street?
Yeah, there's a lot more cars parked in the street, and one of my concerns is I'm skeptical that people will come from the parking lot, come through that gate, and go to the other side of the building. I think it's more likely that they will be using South State Street, and I'm worried about that if you're carrying groceries back and forth. It's not well lit, I don't want more streetlights, but it's not well lit. And I'm concerned that there's not really understanding, how could you if you don't live there, see how fast people are traveling at all hours at night? It'll be dark there at night. So, those are some concerns. I don't know what the answer is or what you can do about that, but I do want to flag that. The other thing I wanted just to say, you know, we reached out to Warren Street, and we were suggested go talk to Father Robert, he gave us a great tour, he's very helpful. We had to initiate that conversation. There was a public meeting put on by the church for this project, we weren't invited. When I saw it in the monitor, I saw public officials there. Maybe, it doesn't sound like maybe the school community was invited, so I think some more, you know, proactive, authentic communication would go a long, long way. As the, they said they've been at this for a year and a half, that's a long time to have some conversations.
Any thoughts on that as far as the, I mean, we're always looking for ways to reach, I mean, you're in the business of reaching out and talking to people, but what's the best way for the disparate groups, whether they're Butters, whether they're just, you know, members of the church and members of the general, you know, the diocese itself, people that want to just come and hear about the services that are going to be offered because they take advantage of those services from other parts of the city? Any thoughts as far as how to get a word out on that, to say, hey, we're going to have a public meeting at the church regarding this? I'd love to hear it, or I'm sure that Father Rich or somebody there would love to hear it as well.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I don't think that falls in the city. I actually can't say enough about how helpful the city was when keeping us up to date. I think it could have been going door to door and saying, we're having this on Tuesday night. We love it if you come, if you can't, we meet with you and answer your questions.
Okay.
Same for the school community. I think that's what I'm thinking about, the people are going to be most affected by this project.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Great, any questions for you, Anne Marie? Thank you very much for your testimony. Who's next? If you could just sign in on the sheet there, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Angela Raymond. I just had a couple of quick questions, like logistically wise, about the driveway. Like, I know that the city's very particular about their driveways, and if they're going from twelve-foot minimum and fourteen-foot, what is the NFPA requirement for driving standards? I know you said fire was on board, but can they actually get, because they're also reducing, they're making the other one with the islands now even harder for a fire truck. Can it even access through Thorndike if they can't, because it clearly can't make that corner?
Yes, I think they'd come in through Thorndyke, I don't know that for sure, but I think they'd come in through Thorndike if they needed to get onto the campus. If there was emergency access that needed to get right to the building, they'd come right up through that alleyway, but you wouldn't be able to make the turn to go anywhere from that, I believe.
Can they even get in on Thorndike with the new curbs that are put in there? Can they, can a fire truck actually get in there?
I can't speak for the fire marshal, but he reviewed turning radiuses, the responding equipment, and the concern that he had was just to make sure that the height of the overhead utilities were at the thirteen and a half feet.
I mean, even, even looking at just where the curbs are on both sides of that, coming in off of Thorndike, it can't make, because Thorndike's a narrow street anyway. Can it make the corner coming in with a curb on both sides of it as it's coming in? It doesn't have the turning radius coming from Thorndike into it if there's a car parked in there, because all of those parking spots as well are narrow spots. So, if there's a truck, a pickup, like, I drive a pickup or a large SUV. If my SUV is parked in that end spot, it's not going to fit, it's going to stick out probably two or three feet over the end. Can a fire truck get in there?
Yes.
If I might, page seven of the plan set that we received does have the truck turning templates.
It does?
That shows the fire trucks turning in and out from Thorndike.
I'll have to look on that one then.
Yep, and it shows them not impacting the parking spots on that side of the building.
Okay.
I don't know.
I just thought it was a very tight, I mean, I know, like I said, I drive a large SUV or a pickup, that it's tight now getting in there, and especially coming in on a little alleyway if there's the tenants that Father was clear to point out, they're on the wrong side of the property line, but they're still there every single day. And then it depicts parking along South State Street, which we all know is not possible. The city doesn't even maintain that street correctly this year. I myself called four times to get the curb line cleaned because we can't even stop on the side of the road to let our kids out on the curb because the general services doesn't plow it. The city, snow removal stops at Thorndike. So, will the city be adjusting snow removal process to include beyond that school? So, we can actually have the curb and have, because when construction starts, we all know that alleyway's not going to be able to be used. Right now, we pull in through there so we can drop off and pick up. When construction starts and this, we get snow in New England, we're not going to be able to stop on the street and let our kids out safely. Can anybody answer that one?
Good questions, I can't answer that. Let's see what we can find for you.
Okay, and then I had one more.
So, when you drop off now, you go through the alleyway?
You go through the alleyway, the new traffic pattern that they put in place is you go through the alleyway, and then you make a horseshoe, well, you pull through the alleyway, and there's two lane traffic there, one to go to drop off the middle school, and then the elementary school goes straight. In the afternoons, the elementary school pulls through, and they pull through the parking lot. If not, then we block all of South State Street. So, that's a big concern that we're losing that many parking spots because now the vehicles that line up in the afternoon, we're going to be out in South State Street backed up a block or two. It's black, it's backed up now on a regular, normal day.
So, let me ask you, so the, again, so our piece of it is very narrow, it's the building itself. So, this, this building doesn't change that at all, does it?
It does.
It does.
Because you're losing parking spots.
Okay.
So, that's what they're proposing, new parking spots, but they're smaller, they're a smaller parking spot is what they're proposing in, and the parking spots that we have now go around the playground, and they park, like, if there's a service at the church, they take up the entire parking lot, Main Street, South State Street, like, take up the entire area. So, if you have to get in there, and it's around school pickup or school drop off, it's a nightmare trying to get in and out.
Yeah.
You just can't because there's, we all know parking in Concord is at a premium.
Right.
You can't, there's not enough of it anywhere.
Yeah.
So, I just don't want to see us lose parking spaces and then not have the availability, be able to still pull around for car pickup in the afternoon, and now we're creating a problem by that new building going in and the footprint changing that's there.
Yeah, okay. Great, questions? Yep, keep going.
The only other thing that I had was that if they're accessing the underground, I know South State Street's under the moratorium, but if they're accessing it, they're already going to be going out to the curb. They're going to be accessing it because they're adding in the drainage and the water in the sewer. Why not just go underground from there and eliminate the pole altogether from that corner where the utility pole is already at? Because it's on, it's on the Butters' property, correct? I think we were talking about the utility pole?
No, it's not on the Butters', it is on the actual school.
It's on the actual school property?
Yeah.
I was just curious to that, because I know we've had a lot of, we have an excavation company, so we've had a lot of projects that they've, that they've not denied the overhead because of moratoriums, and then they're saying, okay, well, now you're saying it's an okay-to-go overhead?
Well, it isn't always okay to go, but it's okay in certain scenarios where it's already there and you're changing it.
I think this one too, the little bit of difference in this one is that pole also connects to the other buildings on the site. So, now you're talking they'd have to trench across and disturb further to go to those buildings, which are already overhead. So, they are proposing from that pole into the building underground though. Thank you though.
Great, thank you for your testimony. Other, who's next? Yep, come on up. Great, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Thank you, Valerie Benitez. So, I think you've all seen the letters that my husband sent in. So, I am a parent at St. John's. I share the concerns of my husband, but in addition to that, I also had a question. We were told that as part of the food pantry, as it will be constructed, the playground that's there will be removed, and there were some discussions that it may be repositioned elsewhere. If it is repositioned elsewhere, taking up some parking spots, how is that going to be handled? Is that something that needs to come back here or could not be something doable?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't come back here at all.
So, they could, they could move the playground?
Internally, within the, within the footprint of the, of the school, right? I think.
Unless they're taking over parking.
Unless they're taking, unless they what?
Unless they're eliminating.
Permanently eliminating parking, yeah, unless they're eliminating parking, then they'll have to come back.
Okay.
So, if they repurpose it over parking, or, I mean, there's ways to repurpose it, it's just a matter of how they're going to do it. That's a question for them.
Right, right, but I just wanted to understand from the board, you know, what are the limits and what can be done? What we could be discussing with them, just so.
And again, if they eliminate parking, then it's, then it's the trigger.
It's a trigger.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any questions with Valerie? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Come on up. Hi, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Hi, I'm Veronica Carter, I'm a parent of some St. John's students. I have just two questions. I do want to point out that the, the access between, I was the one who talked about this, the access between Berry Hall and the main school building. I did some numbers, I'm a numbers person, I'm an engineer, so. An average student would walk between the building three times a minimum per day, that's nineteen times a week, seven hundred times a year. With seventy students, that's fifty thousand student crossings between the main building and Berry Hall. And that doesn't have a designated accessway on the site plan, it really should. So, I'm just going to leave that there. The other part is just a question that I haven't been able to get answered. Why is the building designated as an assembly? If you look at the zoning codes, the assembly use requires one parking spot per forty square feet of building. But everything talks about warehouse and market, and so I'm just wondering why it's designated as assembly?
I bet we have an answer for you.
There are different classifications for building code versus zoning code versus fire code.
Yep.
And the assembly classification comes from the building code. Doesn't have anything to do with the zoning code or the use. It's, it's the, it's the type of occupancy classification that comes out of the International Building Code.
Right, so this is what, that's the answer that I was hoping for. So, why does the market as a pantry fall into an assembly?
Well, that, that, I don't know, that'd be a question for the design professional.
Those are the questions that I have.
Great, any questions? Thank you, Veronica, thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, who's next? Oh, there we go.
Good evening.
Good evening, if you could state your name for the record?
Hi, I'm Trisha Dion, I'm a parent of St. John's, I have four kids at the school. I've been there eight years so far, and I have a lot more to go. My kids in kindergarten, I'm going to be there forever. It's a K through eight, actually, pre-K three through eight now. So, I just have a statement, and I want it on the record because you are the governing body, right? You make the final decision, so if we don't say it here, who do we say it to? As you can see, there are a group of concerned parents here tonight from St. John Regional School. We share the campus with Christ the King Parish. The food pantry was a surprise to us just under two weeks ago at the press release. That was the first time the majority of these parents heard about that food pantry. It was not communicated. We are here because we have multiple concerns about the removal of the playground, the placement of the food pantry in between two school buildings, the safety of our students on an open campus where our students cross back and forth multiple times a day. We do not feel that we had a chance to discuss these concerns with the church and come to a meaningful solution that allows us to coexist in relative harmony on our campus. We're not here to prevent the food pantry. We have had a food pantry on the campus for forty years, but I don't feel like our concerns are being hurt, and we have not seen any changes to the plan or to any of their designs from two weeks ago when we met with them at the press release. We need a chance to talk to them and to come up with a solution that works for all parents, students, and the church in order to move forward with this food pantry. It's, we don't want to stop it, we really don't, we just need a solution.
So, concern-wise, any specifics as far as the concern? I mean, we've heard about movement across the campus, we've heard about the playground.
And for me, it's safety.
It's safety, and what's?
It's an open campus, and we are inviting a population, and we don't know the demographic of that population. That has not been said right now. According to them, we service fifty-four families. This plan is to service fourteen hundred families.
Okay.
And we don't know any more than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, let somebody else get up, yep.
Welcome to the, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Sure, Latisha Borelli with a B. I am also a parent of a St. John's student and a member of Christ the King Parish, so I come to both sides of the table. I know you guys are talking about building and structure, so I think all the other opinions don't maybe need to be heard here, but as far as building and structure goes, I think some of you have come to the campus. The alleyway that the children use right now is extremely unsafe. It is blocked by a playground, and the food pantry, it is tiny. I think someone spoke to it earlier. The kids dart out because it's behind a fence, so they come from, you know, the playground. And honestly, I, I'm very nervous even bringing my kid back and forth because the kids are always coming through there, and it's very small. So, you have to be extremely careful. So, the fact that there would be one way to go, because some kids dart through the tiny little alley, and some kids go around because they're middle schoolers, they're autonomous in their decisions. And so, it's not always clear which path to be using. So, I do think it's a great idea to talk with the developer about a path that is outlined, but right now, the way it is being used is extremely actually unsafe. As far as pickup and drop off, again, building, drop off wouldn't change. Right now, we drive down the alley, we drive up in the two lane that was mentioned, and the children get out. That has not changed with the new food pantry. So, where the food pantry is, the house that exists, it's going where the house that exists and getting longer. The longer part does have to make the playground structure move, the set of monkey bars we have and slides. And then it makes the basketball have to move, it didn't move any actual parking spots, it's a play area. And I know they're considering, you know, other choices there. So, as far as building access and how it changes our morning routine, it actually does not at this time. And I, I don't think everyone knows how, you know, beneficial the community, you know, the community needs this pantry, and it's, it's an unsafe part of the campus right now. If the children were to play near that house, the stairs are not safe. The structure itself is not ideal for children to be interacting with, so this would, again, increase the safety and use of the campus in general.
Questions, Earl?
Thank you very much for your testimony. One of the recurring themes I'm hearing with all of the concerned parents is what's going on with the children during the day and moving about the campus? How is that affected by something that's going on from six to nine P.M.?
I guess that's my, I don't understand the concern, I guess, because school is done, I think aftercare ends at five-thirty is the latest you can pick up your children. The earliest we have proposed for the pantry to open is six P.M., between six or six-thirty is the earliest done the proposal has been for the pantry to open. So, at the latest, that a handful of kids could be on campus till five-thirty waiting for their parents, and then the earliest service would be at six o'clock, so there is that, a half hour window where there wouldn't, there shouldn't be a kind of overflow, but there, I do both. I have a kid at school, and I volunteer at the food pantry, and I've never, never had any issues. And again, the pantry's been there. I know parents are just aware of the project because they might not be part of this community because kids come from all over to go to St. John. They come from all over the state, so maybe they're not aware of what's happening in Concord, and why would they be? But the pantry's there, the pantry's existing, we just need space for it. So, the pantry exists, the hours exist, the people who service it. I think a lot of people would be shocked if they came there for even an hour to see who we are serving. It is your neighbor that you don't even know has food insecurity. It is your neighbor with their children, sitting in their strollers outside in the cold waiting for us to give them a handful of prepared food. So, I've never seen there be a negative interaction because the kids are gone before we've opened. So I've never seen there be a negative interaction because the kids are gone before we've opened the doors. And right now, we actually open at seven. We're considering, like Father was saying, going earlier. So there hasn't been, that I've seen, any interaction between the campus, you know, the student population and the pantry at night.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Teresa?
Remind me again of the hours.
So seven P.M. to nine P.M. Monday through Thursday, we are considering two nights changing to a six P.M. to eight P.M. And after school ends at five thirty P.M., I believe.
Anything on the weekend?
For the pantry, no.
No.
It's on Monday through Thursday. So even Friday nights is open.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Sorry. We need to talk about what she just said.
Okay.
Okay, so that is two things. One, she said that where our playground is right now, like where the basketball court is, will not be affected. That is absolutely not true. That is where the building is gonna be. The long building goes all the way. And it's gonna take sixty feet, sixty feet of our space. That's a big deal. Sorry, I thought you said it didn't.
Yeah.
The second thing is that the food pantry does currently interact with our children. In fact, I had a teacher tell me that people, volunteers, are backing their pickup trucks into our playground when our kids are on the playground and then asking for our kids to help them unload their pickup trucks. In fact, the teacher said one day she caught a volunteer taking our kids into a separate building and that she had to stop them from asking our kids to go without a teacher's permission. It can't happen. The walkway from elementary school to Berry Hall will pass that food pantry. It passes that loading dock. If the loading dock is going to be used during the day and our kids are crossing back and forth in front of that loading dock, that is absolutely an interaction between our kids and the food pantry. Again, we don't want to stop it. We just need solutions for all of this. Thank you.
Question for you. Have you expressed these concerns to the administration of the school?
Yes. We have had the diocese of the Catholic Schools Office and the diocese met with Father Rich a week and a half ago. There has not been any communication to us as parents or to the school as to what they plan to do to change any of this as such.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Hang on. Okay, who's next? Last chance. Hi, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record.
My name is Maureen Dunn. I'm a person of Christ the King. I am also a parent of a child who is at St. John's now and some alums as well. So I just want to reiterate, like Trisha said a moment ago, we are not against the food pantry. If it didn't impact the school, I think we'd be totally one hundred percent in favor of it. And if the communication, which is not the planning board's problem, hadn't been so poor, I think we could really support this wholeheartedly. Love the fact that it gives dignity to the people who are using the food pantry, that it enhances that. I think that's wonderful. I just wanted to state that I'm concerned that the plans that have been presented may change based on what we were told a week and a half ago in the meeting. And why if the alley has been mentioned a couple times tonight is so unsafe, why a pathway for the kids going to Berry Hall was not incorporated into the plan that was presented? If that was already recognized. So that's one concern. Another concern is we were told we are, we are losing the playground. And that had not been addressed in this plan. And when that concern was brought to the architects, they, one thing that was mentioned was that it might be moved closer to the entrance of the school. Based on the plans that are presented tonight, it would be taken away, and we were told that they'd replace the mulch. It'd be mulched again. So it would be taking away pavement. And according to the plans, that means it will impact parking. They will be losing parking if that's where it goes. So I guess I just would ask that this could be tabled until we can have that meeting with the architects and have our concerns addressed because I think it could potentially shift the plans in a way that will impact it for the planning board. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Last chance. Nope. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Come on back up if you guys want to come back up. So you heard a little bit of feedback here tonight. Feel free, if I know, I saw your hand go up to Father Rich, if you'd like to respond, we can do that, or however you want to address any of that. Again, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to get into nitty gritties, but if you could, if you've got ideas or you've got concerns that come out of the comments in the testimony we took, feel free.
First of all, there was a letter that went out to all the parents from the superintendent and from the principal last week. And they, and they already had dates picked after school vacation. We saw that school vacation was coming, and so we thought it'd be better to have this discussion after school vacation. Number one. And we do address some of those issues with playground. We didn't give the specifics because we're working at that. I'll take responsibility that I probably did not communicate well with the school, but we've had three administrators over the last four years. We had our principal who'd been with us for, I've been there thirteen years. He was there for eleven of those years. And he got cancer, and then we had an interim, and then we had another interim, and now we finally have a principal that started in September. The school advisory boards were consulted. I had told them, they were in the advisory board. I didn't give them all details because we were still working on them. But they knew that there was percolating, that we wanted to build a new food pantry. Again, the safety is very important to us. And I guess they don't, they don't visualize, but like I said earlier, the old food pantry will be demolished. And the old food pantry is really what cuts them off from Berry Hall. The new food pantry is moved close to the South State Street. It does take a big space. And the reason it's bigger is because we have more facilities. We're gonna have a full walk-in freezer and a full walk-in refrigerating unit. It's gonna be like a store where you open the door, you take your products out. Right now, we have just home, home refrigerators and freezers. We have probably about five or six freezers and one refrigerator. Having those little offices to meet with people, that takes a little more room, a little conference room, the garage. We don't have a garage right now. The truck is parked outside either near the schoolyard or near the church. So a lot of these issues were looked at when we designed our food pantry, and it was primarily by the people who work there, the volunteers. They're the ones that have to work the food pantry. So yeah, we did not consult the school, but I've always had a great relationship with the school, and I'm one hundred percent supportive of the school. I was shocked when I heard that some parents didn't know we had a food pantry. First of all, two things. If we've had a food pantry all these years and didn't know it was there, that means it doesn't have what have an impact on those people. Secondly, that they would be shocked that there is a food pantry. We're a church, and we try to help the community. So those are things that are internal. They have nothing to do with the building. And again, I think we were motivated to move forward, and we want to start as soon as we can. And so I think a lot of these issues can be addressed within our community and not in the outside community.
So, you know, the testimony that we heard, this was pretty, it was along very specific lines regarding public safety, which is a concern, whether it's kids or adults or whoever it is, if there's people walking in front of loading docks or there's people walking into areas that aren't specifically designed for, you know, that type of stuff to happen. You heard the numbers, somebody brought us the numbers, you know, as far as the seventy students and three trips a day across. So it's not like it's once, one, one, once every now and then. So that's one issue. The other issue is the, is the, is the playground, you know? How do you have a school without a playground? I guess that's.
They're talking about a playground structure.
Structure, right.
So it's not, I mean, they use the whole yard as a playground. They'll be, they'll be losing some space. We're gonna return the basketball hoop. We just have to make sure that we place it at a place that it's, that's reasonable for the kids and also for the property. And we're hoping to move the playground closer to the building. So our preschool and kindergarten will be right outside their door. And so we're gonna be adjusting, and we'll be looking at things, you know, probably the architect can show you. But right now, we're still in that, that, you know, planning of the little, those little details.
So the intent is to have a playground. It's just a matter of.
The same structure they have now will be physically moved.
Okay.
All right. And we had talked about moving it back onto the grassy area, but they felt that it was too far. So we decided, okay, well, we'll bring it right as close to the building as we can. So we're working on those details.
So the third piece of it was, was the basic movement of people around through the campus to drop kids off, pick kids up, different, you know, different aspects of it. Is there any thoughts to being able to fix that?
Very little of that will change. Really, very little of that will change. And I guess they don't conceptualize it. Again, the amount of kids that go back and forth are happening now, and they'll be happening when the remodel is happening, when we have a new building. And I think it'll be a safer space. If anything, it'll be more visible, you know? So again, I think we can address those issues with the parents.
Amanda?
The existing food pantry that's operating, the area in which those that unload or load or have deliveries, that's a different scenario than what is proposed, correct? Meaning they don't have a loading dock. The new one will have.
Can I go up, can I go up and show?
Yes, yes. My question was, the new one will have a very centralized loading dock that would not be.
Inside the building.
Inside the building, meaning that there would not be a potential delivery asking others around them to help unload. So this is inside the building, not outside as it exists today, correct?
Correct.
So from a delivery, from a delivery perspective, if the van comes, they come during the day.
They'll back into the garage.
They'll back into the garage.
Close the door, and they can unload right.
Do their work. And then when they're ready to go, they'll come out sightlines and go from there. Father Rich, go ahead.
So, so I never heard a complaint, never heard a complaint till tonight about some volunteer asking them to help and all that stuff. We certainly in the past have worked with the teachers, and maybe the eighth grade kids would come out and help, you know, bring things in, you know? If we had like a lot of, sometime we have donations from private people, you know, or organizations. But so this is the new food pantry, all right? The old food pantry would be here, okay? So there's Berry Hall. So Berry Hall, seeing from the school, that building was, you know, cross, you can't see Berry Hall from the school. Now the building is.
Hold on. She's gonna give you the existing plan. There you go. That's existing. It's spun around though.
I know. It's, it's, yeah.
This is Berry Hall. This is, this is the food pantry now. There's a little alleyway. Now this is gonna be all pushed. Kids will be able to come across here, all right? This is the loading dock. Before, the loading dock was over here. Well, it's over here. You see this little driveway? That's the loading dock to a single door right now. So it is right off the playground. And the structure, the playground structure is over here, all right? Now we're hope, we're gonna hope to bring the playground up here, all right? The structure, all right? Then the kids will still have this area. As far as the basketball hoop, yes, that's gonna be moved, all right? That was, that answered one of the questions. They said, why do you have the fence here and the people are coming around? Because we don't want to impinge, you know, on more playground space. If the doors or the clients were on that side, it would be very hard to put some, some play area, you know? Because they'd have doors and all that stuff. So the doors are on the other side of the building, okay? And as far as getting things to the cars, we're hoping to have little carriages. It's gonna be like a little supermarket. And we'll have volunteers, and we're hoping to have little carriages to help people get their food out to their car. These are all part of the, part of the, you know, the internal organization. So I don't know if you have any other questions, but.
So I did have one more that we heard testimony that you're going from forty services a day to fourteen hundred. I don't know.
No, that was, that was a number they projected. We have right now fifty-two families a week, all right? But like I said, certainly we can, we'll be able to serve more people, and that should be good. It's all still gonna be in the evening. It's not gonna be during the day.
Yep, yep.
All right. But also, it's a bigger structure because we have like a grocery store. Well, before, we just fill in boxes and give them a box. So that's why there's more, and everything's on one floor. In the old food pantry, we have a basement.
Right.
We can, we can give you pictures if you want.
No, that's.
Or you can go to our website, Christ the King, foodpantry.org. They have their website that's connected to ours.
Teresa?
So you're doing fifty-two families now per week, and what's the maximum projection you can handle out of the new facility?
Certainly, we can, we can take care of a lot more because now people will be able to come in.
Right, right, right.
And, you know, not wait outside, and they'll have a basket, and some, one of the volunteers will go with that.
I mean, somebody did mention the figure fourteen hundred. Could you serve fourteen hundred families there?
I have no clue. I don't know. I did not do the mathematics with them. I'm sure they wouldn't, they wouldn't serve that one night.
That's an enormous number. How you do that.
We're not, we're not a market basket. We're a food pantry.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, a couple of things I just want to clarify. The light pole went away. I can't speak to parking on South State Street. It's gonna happen. It happens now. Communication, as Father Rich said, leadership change there. I know that I personally met with the school board at the school and met with the previous principal. There was conversations, you know, about what was happening several times. We went to the ZBA almost a year ago with this plan and got relief for parking and the other pieces, so that was noticed. Again, my commitment moving forward is to meet with the parents and to resolve these issues, all of which I think can, that are actually minor to the proposed site plan that you, that's before you tell me. I think, I, I know that I can manipulate the site plan in such a way that, can you put the proposed site plan on? That, so one of the things that we did with the new parking lot, if you can see here, there, these are actually islands. Right now, the school puts out orange cones to basically, as people come in, that alleyway down the bottom, they come in, they drop off, they go out Thorndike. The whole idea of having these islands was to make that more of a permanent separation between vehicles and the kids in the parking lot that they use for a playground. The other issue is, in the previous administration or leadership, we talked about kids from St. John's coming, crossing the street here and then coming around the community center to Berry Hall. The parents came forward and said, absolutely, that's not something that, that we support, and, and we're all about trying to fix that. So my thought is to try to get a controlled crosswalk, if you will, that might go through these islands that come all the way to Berry Hall down the bottom. And I believe I can do that without losing parking spaces and just making those islands a little bit different where the, where the walkway might go through. We had several conversations a year ago about what to do with the, with the playground, and it was sort of put on the side burner because we didn't know what was gonna happen with a lot of things. Since they've, since we met with several of the parents, we've talked about the playground structure potentially going here. They have, and I forget what it's called, those ball pits.
Gaga, Gaga ball pit that they would like. We're looking at. I don't, I don't know a lot about it, but.
So there's some green space over here that we're open to trying to figure out how we can fence this so that it's safe for the kids, but that may occur there. So there's, and then there's the, the green space down the other end behind Berry Hall, to the side of Berry Hall.
That a basketball hoop.
That could be used there.
So correct me if I'm wrong. It's been a while since I've walked through there, but the back of the rectory building, that's kind of, there's a, there's a shed there, it says. And it, does that slope down towards the, does it, does it go down?
Slope down towards Pearly Street.
Toward, towards Pearly Street.
Yep.
So why wouldn't you come across the sidewalk and go right in front of that building, right behind the building, right behind the rectory building, all the way over to?
Behind the community building here?
Community building, yeah.
Only that there's two or three dumpsters there. There's some other things. I think there's a couple of chillers on the back of the building. I mean, if we can manipulate in that, in such a way that there's a walkway on that side, we'll try to do that.
I mean, I think that would, and it's a straight shot, right? There's nothing else. You don't cross over the street. You don't go in front of the loading docks.
But there is a little driveway there that goes to the back of the church.
Right. But if you had, if you came across here, do you wanna, so if you came.
She has a picture.
So you would come across here, come out of there with a sidewalk, right up to the back, I mean, you actually, right over to the back of the building here, whatever is there. I don't know.
That's slope. There is a, there is a slope.
There now, right?
There's like a little.
Yeah. So I just, if you came across there, you'd walk right into here, and you'd just leave that, leave all those pinch points and.
That may be a solution.
But that's something.
But again, I don't know what's there now. I know that there's a slope. I know you can kind of. But again, I don't know what's there now. I know that there's a slope. I know you can kind of see it.
There's an outbuilding there, a little shed.
Oh, you can get rid of that.
Yeah, well, that's what we wanted to do.
The comment was made that the building was assembly. I, I went back and looked at my plans. It's called out mercantile in the front and, and storage in the back. It's a unseparated mixed-use building with, and that's a building permit issue.
We did go to ZBA last year and got a parking relief.
Right.
I believe it was stated that it had to be assembly use per zoning. I don't remember exactly why, but that is how it was on our plans when we got ZBA.
Another question?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Because we closed the public hearing, right?
Uh, we haven't closed the public hearing.
Oh, we thought you did.
Did I?
This group thought you did.
We did. So you guys are right.
Well, you're not-
Well, hang tight, I just wanna hear, I just wanna hear one more, if you're getting anything else, Jonathan?
No.
I know you want to make a decision, and I know you want us to move forward, I just don't know that we're ready to do that. So Teresa, shoot.
All right, I'd like to say this reminds me, for those of you here, of that gas station on Pembroke Street. And remember Meredith Hatfield and the group. And I'd like to say what that was, Jonathan, you may not remember it. This is really uncomfortable for me, I cannot vote for it, and I'll tell you why it's uncomfortable for me. And so I'm gonna make the motion, I guess, to table it until next time. Why it's uncomfortable is there are too many things on the plan that, well, we'll fix this, I mean, even Father, you said, oh, that's not supposed to be there, that's a mistake. There are too many things on the plan, to me, that you all are gonna fix, or we're gonna figure out where to put the playground, or we're gonna figure out how to do this walkway, or we're not gonna have that alley, or we're gonna do with this with a tree. I just can't vote for something that I'm not seeing that is more complete, and that is so that I understand really what's going on. But more importantly, I'm really concerned about the lack of communications with your, your parents. I'm assuming you've talked to the parishioners, but a letter went out last week, you're coming to us today, and you're gonna have the meeting with the parents after vacation? They don't have a voice then. I mean, if you sent the letter out and you're meeting with them after we've voted, they don't have a voice. I cannot go for anything that has not given a voice to the community you serve. The other thing that troubles me, as you said a number of times, that you're gonna work this out within your community, and we don't want to work it in with the outside community. Well, this is something that affects the entire community, and it affects your, your, your parents who live in Concord, the kids who don't live in Concord. So I would really love it if you would go, guys would go back, meet with the parents next week or the week after, get this worked out, and everybody come together, so I would feel really great about voting, yes. I totally agree that food pantry is great, you need a bigger one, you're doing a huge service, but you've got to serve the parents as well, the kids of the school, and the bigger community. I think, I'm not sure procedurally whether my motion is to table or to-
You can, you can make a motion to table, and if you get a second, we can, we can roll from there.
Right, because I mean, I do want them to come, I want them to figure it out. As much as I don't want to put you off, a month is not a lot of time to work with those within your own community. So I would like to make motion to table, please.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
You beat Matt to the point, I think.
You did, you beat me to the motion, you beat me to the second, thank you for that.
We got to make a motion.
So we heard a year and a half, and they want to move forward, no more delay for construction timing. A year and a half, including going to ZBA for variance or relief, I don't know exactly what it was, which had to do with parking on the site, which the parents are concerned about. So we had seven people testify, I believe, six are parents. We heard about internal circulation, we talked about impact on street traffic. So that would be South State Street. We talked, we heard about loss of playground, basketball area. A lot of these are school issues. A lot of these are issues that the school should be dealing with. I even think there was a, I think there was somebody related to an employee at the school who testified, if the website is correct, who wrote, you know, who just sent us something. So this is, like, I usually get this angry or this upset, but these parents had to come here to a public meeting to ask questions of a board that can't make certain, these decisions because it wasn't communicated. I, it's just, I'm, I'm really surprised, and I feel for the parents. I think this is, I think this food pantry is a great thing, but I just, I just can't believe that we're here having this conversation. And I feel, I just feel for the parents. So I fully support that.
David?
I would like to reiterate what Teresa, I, I in good conscience couldn't vote. And I, I just say that it's not our purview to dictate to you or even oversee your communications, but as part of your design, I think, part of that design, and my, my takeaway from tonight was the abutters comments and the parents' comments in terms of communication. I think that that's really where it's falling down. You've got to come up with a better design for communication, because if you can enlist their support, it's gonna make a huge difference here.
Okay.
Good break?
Can I, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm gonna support this also, mostly because it seems to me that I'm not entirely sure that with, when you receive the rest of the input that you would receive from your public outreach to the community and the school, parents, et cetera, that that wouldn't materially change some portion of what you might want to do on the plan. So that, that's really what my concern is. It seems like there could be something related to the drop off and safety that you might be unaware of, that you, that might actually physically have you make a change in the plan. So really, I don't see how you can vote on the, what's being proposed tonight until you've really had that feedback, so you can really finalize the plan.
Okay, any other comments, questions? So, yep.
Just very quickly, if you could add to your motion a date, certain, if you want it to be March twentieth, the next, or-
That should be in the-
Because of the dates.
Yeah, yeah.
If the applicant thinks they'll be-
If the applicant's not ready, then they can request a postponement.
Yeah, if you think you're ready, I would, I would propose a date of next month, which is what, March twentieth? March twentieth. And then if you're not, you can come back to us, or if you want me to give you, propose a date farther out, I could do whatever.
I think March twentieth will-
Okay, then I will amend my motion to have March twentieth.
We've got a motion that's been amended to the second. The second that Amanda made is still valid. Any further discussion? So all those in favor of tabling this application to the March meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're tabled. And again, communications, 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 let's get everybody on the same page, and we'll be off and running. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on. We've got one more item on our agenda tonight. Eight G, if we could read eight G into the record.
In accordance with RSA six, seven, four, five, four, the state of New Hampshire Department of Administrative Services requests review of a proposal to construct a four-hundred-nine-space parking garage at thirty-eight School Street in the Civic Performance District.
All right, is the applicant here? Come on up.
They're all here. They ain't calling here.
All right, let's, let's get a quick staff update on this. Again, hey, guys, hey, hello? I don't have a gavel. Fire took my, fire took my gavel. Let's let the folks in the back get out here before we-
The question on this, can we have it done by tomorrow morning, so I can-
No, it's only nine-thirty. Hey, folks, can we, we got, we got more to go here. Can we get out of the building? All right, so we'll bring this back to order here. This is a six, seventy-four application, so we're here in advisory role. We'd like to, we'd like to give them feedback if they are so inclined, but welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record.
My name is Keith Hemingway. I'm the project manager for the Department of Administrative Services, Division of Public Works.
David Conger from Duane King Engineers. We're the civil and the traffic engineer on the project.
I'm John Alden from Scotten Partners. I'm the architect.
I'm Kevin Trout from Scotten Partners, also the architect.
Great. I don't think we probably have a staff update, right? Just do a-
Not, not much of one. They did meet with ADR at their last meeting, and ADR was pretty much in support of the project.
It looks beautiful.
It does.
So, and, and you know what? I, we sat here and did a, the steam building on Green Street, and I don't know who did the steam building. It looks great. So we, we had said it looked good, and we sat here and, and passed judgment on it, and, and the same with the Archives Building over on Fruit Street. They just are, they're, they're great work. So if this comes out as nice as the steam building did, you get, you get your work, you got long-term, long-term goals here, but it looks great, so.
Thank you. We're, we're very proud to be working in the city of Concord. There's so many wonderful examples of architecture and, and history here to draw from, and this was a, an opportunity that was just too good. I mean, we have so many images and features that we kind of just took from other buildings around to make it fit in, so. I may, I, I don't know what your format is exactly, but we, we've got a lot of comments, we provide written responses. We're happy to go over any, anything in that area that you want. We have a few updates since then, if you want to see them.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we're giving us just a general overview. I think everybody here gets a packet of info. We roll through it, we take a look, we make our own notes, and we may ask a few questions here and there, but we'd really like to kind of hear just a, a general overview and a, and a quick little synopsis, and then we'll roll from there.
All right, so for the architectural review, we prepared a small slideshow. So this is very short.
Yep.
You won't fall asleep. It, but it explains a little about the development of this that's not in the package that you got for the application.
Great, we'll hit it.
So we'll go through that, Kevin's gonna do that, and then if there, there are a couple of updated slides from landscaping, because that was a number of the comments that we received, and the exterior lighting, which was also an area where we felt we needed to give you a little more. So we, we have those, pay attention to those. And then we have Dave here to answer any and all traffic questions, as that seemed to be the other major topic.
All right.
So this slide we'll start with, that's not exactly the beginning of the presentation, but it kind of gives us a good overview of what our garage looks like and how it fits into the site, as you guys have already noted. And we've said before, that was one of our prime directives, was to make sure a parking garage in the middle of the Capitol area fitted and didn't take away from the great architecture around. We're all pretty familiar with the site, I think. Here we can see where the footprint of the parking garage sits in comparison with the existing building that's there. We've got a bunch of 3D renderings showing what the parking garage will look like from the street. This is looking down Capitol. This is looking up Capitol, east on Capitol. This is the view of our main stair tower and pedestrian entrance. This is Green Street and School Street. I'm sorry, that, that was State Street and School Street, this is Green Street and School Street.
This is Green Street, we're on Green Street, so the City Hall is behind us?
Direct to the left.
Okay.
Looking up School Street on the, on the right side of the drawing there. This is Capitol from Green, that's where the vehicle exit will be. And kind of end here on the pedestrian entrance. We call it pedestrian entrance, that might be a little-
Pedestrian entrance is-
It's the entrance to the parking garage.
On Capitol Street?
Oriented directly across from the entrance to the Legislative Office Building.
Capitol Street.
On Capitol Street.
On Capitol Street. And where, I didn't see the, where's the entrance to get into the parking garage?
Schools.
Right there?
See the car there?
Okay.
Yeah, that's on School Street.
And just one, one in, one out?
Yes.
Same entrance, in and out?
No. You enter on School, you exit on Capitol.
On Capitol, okay.
That's the exit on the Capitol.
So you exit on Capitol, which is one way down, right?
Yep.
Towards State, yes, okay. Enter on School.
Might be more sense here.
The slowest light in the city. Yeah, you guys are responsible for fixing the damn lights. Both School Street Light and the Capitol Street Lights are terrible.
You can die there.
The School Street Light in particular is awful, so. So I, I did notice on the rendering, it's a little offset. It's not straight to the, straight to North State Street?
Which side do you want us to make it straight to?
So left side of the, left side of the front building, front corner of, of the, so bottom of the screen there on the left.
So it's flush along the bottom, parallel with School Street, but the whole block is a trapazoid, so we can only be flush on one side.
I got you.
We purposely put it the way we did, mostly to open up the Capitol Street way there, and see, you know, nicer, nicer view down that street, it's a little wider, and, you know, you've got City Hall at one end and the Capitol kind of at the other. So it seemed that that was the more important street to pay attention to the pedestrian activity and, and other circulation.
I, I love the trees, too. I love the, it looks like it's well landscaped, which is great. And you decided to roof it in?
No.
No?
No, there's no parking on the upper level. Fourth floor, parking down.
Ah, okay.
But the parapets are on the upper level, mostly as vehicle bearings. They're tall enough that from the ground, you won't see a lot. And they're done as a parapet, so it looks like the top of one of the surrounding buildings.
I got you. So the overhead area looked to me like it had roofs on it, it's just ramps, right?
That, you know, maybe that's a bad picture to show. It's the lowest quality rendering.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yep, it's, it's, you're actually looking at the parking garage. Just some slides of the context, Capitol Building, Legislative Office Building, the Annex Building. You can see why we're, we're building it out of precast concrete. We're detailing it so that it has an appearance of, you know, borrows from the masonry language.
So no EFS, no, no external-
What are those poles? Those, are you putting those in, or?
Those are existing.
Those utility poles?
Yeah, existing.
They're there.
They're existing?
They buried those, huh?
They're about two-thirds of the way down School Street, and they're not just, with the uptight, as you guys put them underground.
You guys?
They're in the way of our building.
Good luck. You guys. I think they're in the middle of the sidewalk now, as you walked up School Street.
Yeah.
If you don't trip on the broken concrete. Sorry.
Okay. See the image on the right there? We're gonna detail the concrete so that it kind of appears to be rusticated stonework or just blockwork similar to what the Capitol has. The pilasters and tableture and water table are all gonna be pretty well-defined GFRC elements, glass fiber reinforced concrete. We're able to mold that and get a nice level of detail, borrowing from the classical vocabulary.
And arched, arched bars down at the bottom there for the-
That's, those are steel, like, security grates.
Yeah, security grates.
You know, we're trying to detail those, so again, they reinforce the classical design vocabulary of the area. Should we talk about lighting?
Sure.
Got a couple slides from our lighting designer. We're planning some linear fixtures around the perimeter of the building. They will be on the building, not on the ground. They will lightly wash the walls, the first floor and second and third floor, kind of capture the entablature cornice as it reaches out over the building. Dimmable, you know, we'll have a lot of control over how much light we broadcast up the building. It's a very tight beam of light, so we're not broadcasting light anywhere besides the building.
So that left drawing there is showing it's hitting that cornice?
Yeah, yeah.
The light, what, are they gonna be that yellowish?
No, it's, that's a rendering.
Okay.
We changed them for holidays.
Yeah.
Been a popular topic of conversation. I don't think we're gonna go that way.
Anything, but we were told white only, so.
Interior lights, though, maybe, you know, purple and greens on the inside going through the security grates. That would, that would set a tone, wouldn't it?
Christmas lights.
The tone is correct, yes. Safety-wise, security-wise, we plan to light the inside of the stair tower, just a good, high level of visibility under the street. This, this image doesn't really reflect-
Can I, just a quick question?
Sure.
Just want to understand, if you go back to your lighting one, did you say you're uplighting?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the building, uplighting, not in the, not in the-
So we have, we got into this last month, our regulations actually discourage uplighting. Now, I know you don't officially respond to us, but we do have kind of a, an ongoing issue right now about uplighting of- So, we have, we got into this last month. Our regulations actually discourage uplighting. Now, I know you don't officially respond to us, but we do have kind of a, an ongoing issue right now about uplighting of buildings not downlighting.
Our, our intention is not to do it in the same way some other area buildings are with big spots that cast a lot of light up. They're very focused LED linear strips. I mentioned 10 degrees, you know, we're washing the wall, not trying to wash the sky.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that you do have that.
Yeah, sure.
It's a gift that keeps on giving.
Yeah, it is.
We gotta fix that.
Well, there's some open wounds, I think, still from last month.
Alright, we'll continue on.
I, I'll kind of close it up there.
Okay.
That's generally the gist of what we've got. If I have a slide that illustrates a question, answer to a question, I'll blow it up.
Were any traffic questions? You mentioned there was some traffic feedback. Is, is it movement traffic? Is it queuing up traffic at the lights or is it, what's, what was the traffic feedback? Is that traffic, there's a lot of traffic in that little area and depending, I mean, you guys get out in the middle of the day.
Not today.
Not today?
I mean, maybe I could give a like, a little rundown of like where we started because, you know, part of the design process actually was initially, we did a preliminary analysis of three different locations for the accesses. One on Capitol Street, one on Green Street and one on School Street, working with staff. Primarily, that was like a first alternative view because we wanted to look at the intersection to determine, was there a significant difference for the access locations to the surrounding street network? That's not a report that was submitted here. It was a preliminary report that we worked with staff on and out of those discussions, basically two, two general things kind of came out. From a capacity standpoint to the surrounding intersections, there wasn't a significant difference in those different scenarios. Ye- yes, there were individual movements that were different, but it wasn't like, oh my goodness, this particular location was, was, you know, not a great one from a traffic standpoint. This other portion that came out of that really was more the discussion with the staff of a couple of things of not wanting to have an access on Green Street with a police station and the locations of the intersections. That wasn't, you know, deemed a conducive one. And the fallout, not in a negative way, was to do an entrance on School Street, exit on Green. So, we didn't look at that as an alternative originally, but we kind of pared it from the information that we had provided initially to, to do that. Subsequent to that, we did update the, the trafficking impact study to show the current configuration. The other element that changed in that design, I'm sorry, in that subsequent traffic impact study report was we also worked with the, the city staff to develop our trip generation. So, at the earlier time, we had a higher weighting on Center Street than the current traffic impact study. And then from that, I think we did a couple iterations of, you know, how, how to manage that trip generation and a few things that, you know, in this speaks to some of the comments that, that have come in, both from staff and from the board is, it's a unique situation here. We have an existing garage that is being removed, Store Street. We also have parking and use at DOJ Garage that is going away. So, we're not as much adding a new traffic. We're relocating it. So, as we did, did our analysis, there's a couple of things that, you know, were a little bit difficult. The, the DOJ site itself was not fully in operation. So, we had to do assumptions and trip generation for it as we're subtracting out those traffic numbers for the site. And then concurrently, a similar thing, doing the same thing for the Store Street Garage. So, you know, from our step review of the traffic, you know, removing or relocating those traffic volumes to the new location with the, with the new parking numbers. So, just as a, you know, backstop of like how we got there from a trip distribution, capacity numbers, and then, you know, really from a 20,000 foot level at, at the pure capacity standpoint, there wasn't a significant impact to the intersections.
So, there's, there's gotta be a significant impact on the, on the Capitol Street intersection when you're leaving. So, you, coming in, everybody comes in and they may filter in, but sessions out, you go to your car, you get in and you queue up to go left or right. And, and there's only what, five or six spots there before you're backed up across the, across the street. So, there's gotta be a, an impact there.
That, that's a low-volume road now and that obviously is where we're, full, everything's accident.
Yeah.
So, that is from a... Well, you're dumping everyone there, right?
You're dumping everyone. So, they're either gonna turn right to get through quickly or they're gonna wait to go left.
Correct.
And the same thing's gonna happen again coming in. So, you know, if you're, you've got everybody coming in from all over the state, they're coming in and they're getting off the Manchester Street exit and coming up and going on the Store Street and coming down slow, you know, nice long runway to get into the, to existing garage. Or they just park on Main Street or wherever they feel like, you know, now. Or they coming from the north, they're getting off at 13 or, they're getting up at 14 and coming up, swinging around, going down on School, Store Street and going in the, in the garage that way. Do you have any idea what, how many people park in that garage now? I mean, is it, is it 80%? Is it 40%? I don't, I have no idea, but it seems like there's an awful lot of legislative parking going on, on Cap. I worked on Capitol Street for 10 years and there's a lot of people parking right there. You can talk to it. You're a legislator.
It was full last Thursday.
Full?
Full. Yeah. And I don't know how many spots there are, but it was full.
So, basically between January and Ju-
Right.
In January and June.
Well, January and June, yeah, it's packed.
Don't, don't try to get off at exit 14 or on and don't go down State Street. Between that and School Street, you know, just stay clear.
Cause of sessions, yeah.
Cause sessions.
And you wanna stay off Capitol Street and Main Street because that's gonna dump there and they're gonna go left or right.
But they're gonna spend money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're gonna spend money.
Oh, yeah, it's just, it's, it's, I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking of how we're gonna handle it going forward, but we haven't even asked our traffic engineer here yet.
So, I provided my comments. They were actually included in the public comments and I did receive your responses today. I still have a hard time believing your trip generation assumption. I don't, not generation, I apologize, distribution. I found it uncomfortable that you didn't actually count the existing garage to know how many are left and right, how many come up, how many you source. You made assumptions based on where people are coming from the state and you didn't actually make observations. That, I think, is somewhat of a flaw. So, it's easy to say, oh, we can put more traffic down this end because we assume that. I mean, I'll ask everybody in the room, if you're coming up from the south and you're going to City Hall, do you go exit 12 and wind your way through town?
No.
Or do you go exit 14?
14.
They're saying in the study, it's exit 12 because Google tells.
It's because they're getting on Store Street.
No, because, no, no, for the new facility, they're telling you that, Google's telling you the same amount of time. So, you weave through the city, through the extra lights on South State.
Ain't gonna happen.
Exactly. And this is where I have a concern that exit 14, we all know, exit 14 Loudon Road at Main Street, North State, Green, that backs up and they back up intersection and they queue up into the adjacent intersection sometime. Today I came through this morning at 8:15 and the traffic was backed up from North State Street to Main Street down exit 14. You physically couldn't even come across the intersection when the light went green. So, they're saying all this traffic's gonna come exit 12 and they're not accounting for what's really gonna happen with exit 14. We're just gonna have a worse condition.
Why 12 and not 13?
13.
They're saying, they're, they're saying with Google, Google is telling you 12 to the City Hall. And I picked City Hall just because it's that site essentially.
It's 12 and then splits off on.
And then you come down.
Splits off on, no, it goes onto North State. It goes onto South State and then goes across Pleasant and then all the way that way.
I, I just, so that concerns me because I think it underplays the impact of those intersections along that corridor. And I, I know there's ongoing conversations between the city and the state and I don't wanna get into all my issues because I think honestly, now that there's comments and response, staff can work with Matt and whoever to work with the state to try and resolve it. Because I just, I'm not sure, sure we're really capturing what the impacts are gonna be. And I think that we're doing a disservice to the people of the city by discounting.
Slung it up in the middle, yep.
If I may ask, and I'm not a traffic engineer, could there, and I do travel Center Street, go under the overpass for exit 14, go all the way up Loudon Road? And I get it that the trip, you know, the, those lights, how they trigger and how bad they are on occasion. Some, some mornings I get greens all the way through. That's great. But I'm concerned that with, I think exit 14 really is gonna be the corridor into this parking garage. And that is, and I've asked, maybe it's a, a, a question for, for Peter and I'm, and if I'm outside of what your purview is and that, is there a chance to, to work with traffic with, with that to help flow that influx at certain times of year? And I'm, I'm saying that because January to June is gonna be when that influx is, happens. Is there, is there, is there a, a ability to do that?
Exit 14, northbound, southbound, offbound, Fort Eddy Road are all under the jurisdiction.
You gotta pull up.
Sorry, so the, exit 14 on and off Fort Eddy Road are all under the jurisdiction of DOT. So, city can work, try and work with DOT, but ultimately signal timing through that corridor is controlled by DOT.
Okay. That's, that helps.
So, that is one thing.
What's, sorry, what's?
DOT.
DOT actually.
Controls which one?
They control the Fort Eddy, the northbound on, the southbound, northbound off and Stickney Ave are all within a coordinated system that are controlled by the state of New Hampshire.
But then as you get up on the other side of Main Street, it becomes cities.
Right. In Main Street, North State Street, Green Street and then of course, and then North State Street heading south is all cor, in a separate coordinated system. So, you've got one system here. When I say coordinate, I mean the signals all talk to each other.
Yeah.
They're same in the other way. So, you've got two that meet. And they're different timings and they're different directions. So, I just think we need to take a little better look at that if possible because it backs up now.
Yep.
And I can only, one of the things I know too is, and I, and I commented about some queuing observations is if you've come up Center Street toward the North Street, State Street, and you actually want to turn left and head toward the site, certain times of the day, the through lane actually kind of curls around the corner and completely blocks the left turn.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, you got it.
And so, if you're saying that's how people are gonna go to get to this site, how are they gonna get, so now all the lefts are stuck behind all the throes. So, maybe we need to do some restriping and looking at that to try and get the traffic over there. Maybe we need to talk about is there parking space or two that needs to be evaluated, whether it still needs to be there in order to provide more. And I just.
I think it's a, it's a topic for another day.
And I think it's staff at this point. I think, I've given my opinion. I think it's up to staff to now take that and run with it and work with them.
Okay. Alright. Matt?
I just have a quick question. So, 409 spaces is what I read?
Yeah.
And currently, I don't know, I'm looking online, Store Street is 200-ish spaces. I don't know if you know.
There's about 200 spaces that are being brought up here.
So, does that mean, and then there's the, the parking under the LOB, there's some under there for the important people. And then, so our question is, is the city going to gain any parking spaces that are covered by yellow bags?
There is a net gain of surface parking.
How much?
Are we at six now?
Yeah, that's the safe number.
Because of the ang, change from.
We moved to the angled parking to try and make sure we didn't lose any, but there are some other entrances to the parking lot that's currently there. They get closed off, so you can gain those couple of spaces. And then we lose a couple because we're putting different entries and exits, but there's a net plus six.
From a, from a, from a build perspective, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a net gain of a few. I think Matt's point's gonna be, if you've got 400 spots, you gotta move some of those people off of Main, off of Capitol and Park Street that are parking on the yellow bag ones because there's no reason for them not to just park in the garage. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that don't even park in the bags. They park in a regular spot.
Headquarters.
All during the day. They're there all day. They're there for, for eight or nine hours and they don't move the car. They come back out and leave. So, I mean, and that's just feedback, feedback to the organization is if you're gonna build it, make people use it. Cause right now, they're not going down to Store Street. They're, they're parking around the Capitol. If it's right there and get, get the yellow bags off and start putting tickets on them. Sorry, sorry, it's late, it's late. Sorry.
I'll say that we're aware that there's, there's currently a balance and a range between the city and the state.
Yes, yeah, and that's.
You, you guys are all gonna be working that out.
Yeah.
We're giving you as many spaces as we can, surface and inside, you, you guys have them here.
Perfect.
So, currently on Store Street, when the house is not, well, I'm in the, so when the house is not in session, they don't block people from parking, the public. So, there's, I won't say the Rebels still go and parks in there, but maybe he does. Is that, which is great, right? But is that gonna be allowed in this new facility?
No, I don't think that we, city.
And so, we're just looking the other way now, but we're not gonna look the other way?
The other way. I'll have a gate in the future.
Yeah.
I think we'll have access to it on the weekends is what I understand. Matt?
It's only one.
We've gotta work out those details.
It's only one, it's really one day a week when there's that many people for four and a half months or five months, so.
The, the numbers that we were given were 27 days out of the year. There's a full complement of legislators. And so.
Most of the time, it's just people that work downtown. Cause if you go after what, nine or 10, the guy's not in the booth. They just go in there and they park.
It's not in the booth unless.
Unless legislature's in session. But he's only there until nine or 10.
He'll track you down though, Rich. Watch out. And I think it's beautiful. I think that the, the pink building, I wish it would get torn out faster. It's ugly. So, I think it's beautiful. You did a great job. And I've been watching the demolition from room 301 and just tear that thing down and go.
Shouldn't you pay any attention to state work?
Nope.
Alright, let's, let's move on. Anything else from the board? Any of the audience have any questions or concerns? Yep, hold on just a sec. Alright, so we'll have you guys hop back. Thank you very much. Got a couple of folks from the audience if you wanna hang tight for some feedback.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
May I be the first? And if so, since I'm gonna qualify as resident, I think maybe more meaningful if they could come back up and it's more given to you.
Well, we'll see. Yeah, come on up, come on up and let's hear what you get to say.
Well, it's a lot of questions.
No, you can stay back.
Well, I'll have you stay back. I can come up for now and see what you've got.
No, what are you, what are you doing? There's plenty of chairs. No, they're not gonna, no, no, let's, I'll run the meeting. Just come on up.
It was a suggestion.
That's okay.
We misunderstood.
Right in the middle if you could, sir. Sorry. TV camera, you want him to take five pounds off you. You gotta sit in the middle. Alright, if you could state your name for the record?
Ron Rayner, resident here for since 89. So, I see that by some of the comments and questions, some of you hadn't had a chance to read the letter that I wrote. I spent quite a bit of time preparing the letter, going over the plans, met with Alec from the city, did, was able to get in touch with Terry at the state. And then presented a lot of ideas that I was hoping would be well-received. Couple of people tonight relative the, relative to Grace, the King Parish nailed it on the head. Parking is at a premium in Concord, a true premium. And so, the more spaces we can accommodate in this garage, the better off we all are. In terms of it's, I broke my comments into three areas, architecture, actually two, architecture including the parapet and then public usage. On the architecture?
I just, I just wanna interrupt you just for a second. So, just remember, this is a 67454 application.
Yeah, I know. They can, they can tell us to go.
They can do whatever they want. So, we're here, we're here.
I am well, well aware.
I don't wanna get into changing.
I'm a regulator.
Okay. I don't wanna get into changing. They should do this or they should do that. We're here more for.
Well, it's in the letter. It's a suggestion.
And I read the letter, yep.
You did? Okay, thank you.
It's right here in our packet.
Okay, but not everybody read it. So, to your, to your point, the steam plant is, is a gem. It's a good-looking plant. I personally prefer a brick. I hope they would reconsider. If not, I've given a link for precast panels that might be cheaper than precast concrete panels. So, I ask, please look into it. On the parapet, one of them said that it's a fourth foot high and it should, it should basically protect from the street level the hiding of most vehicles. If you have a van or a big SUV, a tall pickup, you're gonna still see the top of the, of the vehicle from the street. My suggestion, add another foot to the parapet or an architectural fence. Make it, make it compatible. Last and most importantly is what a lot of you have. Last and most importantly is what a lot of you have touched on, with parking being at a premium. The city has provided free parking for decades on the street through bag meters, through, they just indiscriminately park wherever they want because they have a legislative plate, they're, they can park for free. I have members that work with DES, they come down for repeated meetings and testimony, which is understood, they don't, they don't pay anything, and they can't be ticketed. So, I would coerce and hope that there's common sense between the state, on the state side, working with the city to allow much more parking spaces. If there isn't enough, someone said on a review I saw on the panel, was someone's comments on the board, we may need a fifth floor in the future. If that's the case, damn, do it now. We've got the federal money, do it now. All right? It's all federal and state tax dollars. Let's make most utilization of those now. With regard to parking limits, one of the ladies did say, you're correct, you know, January 1 through end of June is legislative session, there should be restrictions. I have gone at length in the letter, just simply to serve as an initial roadmap. Here's one approach, not the approach, it's one idea, hopefully we can tweak it and follow through on it. Yes, there's gonna be gated entry, but you can, you can program that so, so that it's up at night and the public has usage of the, of the garage at night, even when legislature is in session. I think it's really paramount, and it would, it would speak to the cooperative, cooperation that we need between the state and the city with thriving downtown. I really think it would go a long ways.
Questions? We'll have them back up in a minute to answer, answer some questions.
Questions?
Yep.
There is, which is not in the letter. So, the main pedestrian entryway is on Capitol Street, I saw it. Is there going to be an elevator?
Has to be by ADA.
Yeah, I think there is, it has to be.
I would think so.
Yeah.
I didn't notice it, there is.
Yes.
Is there a stairwell on the south side at each corner, on the south side of the building, on School Street? Is there a stairwell on those two corners?
Yes.
Yes.
Inside the building, so you go in.
Inside, yeah, oh, yeah.
And then down. But it's not that main-
No, the main one is, is good, okay.
Yep. And I appreciate your comments about safety and, and the access to it.
Well, if, all that melts away, when the, when the garage on Store Street goes away, everything should be compatible.
Yeah.
There should be no more excuses for the public not having access.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Rayner?
No, I think he stated pretty well.
He did, and the letter was good.
Thank you.
Sorry, a couple other hands? Yes, sir, come on up. Mr. Rayner, if you just state, if you could just sign in on the sheet there on the table, that'd be great, thank you. Hi, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Hi, Timothy Blagden. I, we have a house in Concord, I, I also do some bicycle stuff. I apologize for not reading the plans ahead of time, I was just here to observe, I will see you again in April with, when we come before-
Oh, the rail trail.
Rail trail, yeah. So, a couple of questions about the garage. I, I would assume that they are planning for electric vehicle charging in the garage on each floor. I would hope that if, I don't know who's allowed to use it, is it just legislators or if it's staff? If, if it includes staff, I would like to see at least one vehicle space be reallocated to holding 10 bicycles. I, I just think it's a better use of, of, of space.
Not that you're saying that legislators don't ride bicycles into, into, that the staff is more likely to, is that?
Legislators are more dispersed.
I gotcha.
That was not disparaging that legislators wouldn't wanna ride in from, from Lebanon, but-
Matt would ride in from East Concord.
Absolutely, but, but if staff was allowed to do it, I think it'd get picked up more.
Just, there is actual bicycle storage interior to the building included.
Awesome.
Not sure which floor I'm looking at, but, yes, it's one, two, three, four, five, it's like eight of them.
We'll check on EV charging, the EV charging was a-
Yeah, thanks, I don't wanna take up more of your time, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rayner. Come on up.
There's an issue right now in the legislature.
Think you could park here from St. John's?
No, no, no.
Or from Chrysler King?
Hi, no, no, no.
Come on, and just for the record, uh-
I am Angela Raymond.
Angela.
A contractor, so I do some removal for the city and for the state. So, my question is about the snow dump. How do you propose, like, I can't see the detail for your snow gate there, and since we hold several contracts in other state facilities that have not so good of snow dumps, I wanna know what that one, what your plan is for that. And your plan also calls out that your snow dump's it directly on top of a drain and a door exit. So, are you gonna plan to close it off for it during snow removal? Cause those are like big things that we fight with the city of Concord on School Street already, and when we have tri轴s, we have a couple tri轴s, a couple one-ton trucks, now we're gonna be backing up on Green Street in front of the police department as we do the snow dump because it comes out, as you come around, we're not gonna be able to back trucks in the way your design is because it kind of funnels down.
Where's the, the snow dump's proposed on Green Street side?
No, it's not, it's on the exit, so it's directly over the exit.
Okay.
So, it's on Capitol, but the way, because it's right on the corner, so if I have, like, usually we have four or five trucks that are lined up to do snow removal.
Yep.
Because that way we can get it done a lot quicker, so when we're lining them up, and we're usually doing it at the same time as the city's doing it, or unless I drag my feet and do it the next night, but Matt doesn't like that. So, the police department might not be happy if we're stacked up in front of, in front of them. That's the only thing that I'm, like, looking at it from a logistical side of it, cause our trucks can't get underneath. Like, we're, we're not gonna be able to back a tri轴 in there and dump into it, so we're gonna have to have the loader, and then he's gonna have to load it in the street.
Yep.
So, that was just, that was just mine.
Okay, we'll ask that question.
The snow dump are good ones.
You asked it, those are good ones.
Thank you.
Thank you for hanging out.
Okay.
I think, did I see anybody else? No?
The first, second, third floor.
Do you wanna, wanna come back up?
We'll melt it.
We will not close the public hearing yet, but we'll have you come back up. You heard some feedback, and again, if you got any, any thoughts?
I don't know why you don't do that on the top.
I don't know that you guys are in the position to say you could open it up and let people park there forever, but the snow dump question was a good one, and a couple of the other points we heard. Is there, is there EV, is there EV charging in any of the?
We have the capacity and the electrical supply to the building.
Yep.
So that we can do that in the future.
Okay, but not right out the gate, not?
We'll open with EV charging.
Okay. All right. And then, any public access thoughts? I know it's passworded, or it's gonna be passed, pass key, right?
That's, well, I mean, that's still-
I think that's for the city, maybe, that's, that's above our pay grade, so. I'd say, it's a good point, and I think it's a good one, and like I said, the snow dump was a good one as well.
We've talked about it, and Matt was involved in those discussions, so.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Staff, any feedback, thoughts? Great-looking building, I, I can't stress enough, I think it looks great, so hopefully it all comes together. What are you doing with the pink granite that's coming off the existing one?
It's, it'll probably be recycled.
Great, okay. All right?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment. I would just note that I had the pleasure of being involved with the committee that worked with this at the state with these four gentlemen there before you. It was a very collaborative process. I think the state did their best to hear what the city's concerns were brought by